Ah, test one two two.
...
It does match. That's funny. Is that better? Okay. Now that I've got everyone's attention. Good evening. I call the September 26th meeting of the Morrisville Town Council to order. Thank you to those watching via livestream and those who are watching a recording of this meeting. On September 28th, the video of this meeting will be uploaded to www.morrisvillnc.gov/government. I'd like to recognize our Sergeant Arms. This evening, that is Sergeant Strickland, has 15 years of law enforcement experience, 13 years with the town of Morrisville. She has served on the crisis intervention team and has received Officer of the Year recognition several times. Thank you very much for being with us this evening. Tonight's dedication will be delivered by Councilmember Ralph.
Thank you, Mayor. Please bow your heads in prayer. Today, we come together to lead one of the most diverse and inclusive towns in the nation, the all-America city of the town of Morrisville. In the midst of these divisive and turbulent times, our town is an everlasting reminder of what two democracies democracy is about, that we can come from faraway places, live up to our God-given potential, and achieve our dreams, no matter where we come from. We pray for our soldiers who defend this freedom here every day and abroad, and also for any families who have lost loved ones due to illness, catastrophic storms, or the tragic gun violence in our nation, which is spreading throughout our nation like a cancer. As we celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month, we are grateful for the remarkable contributions of Hispanic Americans in all walks of our life in the United States. We pray for our first responders, police, and firefighters who keep us safe every day and look forward to a very successful Fire Station 3. We pray and are grateful for the hard work and sacrifices of our auto workers and for a peaceful resolution of this labor dispute. Finally, we pray for Martha Page and her family as she begins a new chapter in her life and retires from the town of Morrisville. We are so grateful for her dedicated service as our manager for the past decade and for her commitment to developing a continuous culture of innovation, which has enabled our town to emerge as one of the top towns to live, work, and play in the nation. We pray that you give Brandon Zudma, the new manager, the incoming manager, the strength and wisdom to successfully lead our town forward. Finally, we prepare, as we prepare to celebrate Diwali at the end of October, let us pray that the light and love of our hearts will always lift us out of any darkness that surrounds us. Amen.
Thank you. If you are able, please stand as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we adopt tonight's agenda, Town Council policy is to review and ensure there are no conflicts of interest or appearance of conflict of interest with any items on the agenda. Would any council member like to share anything at this time? Okay. Do I have a motion to adopt this evening's agenda?
I make a motion to adopt this evening's agenda.
Second.
A motion in second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously 7-0. There are six items on this evening's consent agenda: a resolution granting utility and pipeline easement to the town of Cary, community garden and Western Wake Farmers Market lease renewals, and approval of August meeting minutes. Would anyone like to pull any of these items for discussion before we take the vote? Okay. Is there a motion in second to adopt the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
A second?
Motion in second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that also is unanimous 7-0. We have two administrative reports tonight: a quarterly capital project update and a personnel policy review work group update. Administrative reports are provided as information-only items unless council has any questions. Are there any questions from council on these items? I'd like to recognize Councilmember Fender.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
On the capital project update.
Okay. I'd like to request Mark Spanioli, our Director of Engineering, to come to the podium. Good evening, council members.
Good evening.
A couple of questions on three of the different projects.
Okay.
The first one on the Airport Boulevard extension with the status. It said, right away acquisition anticipated to be finalized in July 2023. It has been pushed out a few months to address a few properties with deeds and deeds of trust and relocation of residents at 707 Church Street. So is there another date that, I'm assuming it's the DOT?
So yeah, so the latest update that I have is that the DOT is working actually on an eminent domain for one of the properties, maybe the one listed here. The hearing for that, I think, is scheduled for November.
Okay.
So once they get through that process and they can continue moving forward, but they do need to go through that process of condemnation before they can finish and move forward to project construction.
So what is it you said they're working for, for November?
Eminent domain.
Okay.
Condemnation for one of the properties.
Okay. All right. And then my, the next question I had was on the Southern Lot, Church Street Park.
Yes.
Just trying to get an idea of more concrete timeframe. You know, I know that construction is ongoing out there. I drive by there a couple of times a day and I see equipment. I'm just curious if there are some milestone dates that like are, are, will some amenities be opened up before others, or is everything going to need to be complete before we open up that whole section?
So the South Lot, just to give you a little bit of a project or construction update, they're doing a lot of the site work now. They're actually working on the installation of the under drains for the volleyball courts. And they're finishing up some final permitting for the actual bathroom, restroom, and shelter building. And the anticipated substantial completion for the entire project is in February of next year.
Okay.
They're moving at pace, you know, unless we get some unusual winter, but I think they'll, will be done with the site work by then, so it'll just be vertical construction, so it won't be as impactful. I don't know if we'll get some of the sport courts completed before everything's done together. We're giving it our best shot, but the weather may end up being cold anyway, people won't use it at that time.
I understand. And then also with the update included in the report was that the staff is evaluating the possibility of locating the statue in this area. Will that delay the project in any way?
No, no. We're working on incorporating that into the project. If it, it's not going to impact the schedule for our project.
Okay. All right. That's good to know. And then lastly, with the church street sidewalks. So I know that, that we want to finish up multiple segments through here. Is there any possibility of like prioritizing certain segments and doing these in parallel or some earlier than others?
Yes. Our biggest, I'll say thorn in our side here has been, has taken us a long time to complete some of the administrative portion of the paperwork with NC DOT. We're finally through that process. It took a considerable amount of time and we should be moving into the design phase. Well, we are moving into the design phase now. We can prioritize some of it. We're going to get, we're still concentrating on getting the portion of sidewalk in front of the Church Street Park done as the first priority. And then if there's some other desires that we can discuss for some other portions that need to be installed first, we can do that too. I think once the contractor hits the ground running, the construction's going to take less time than the design and administration has taken.
Yeah, it seems like it's been hanging out here for a while. And then the other concern I had was it looked like we're going to add the, I mean, it looks like this is increased scope, the adding the crosswalk improvements and the intersection improvements.
Yes.
Is that in addition, is that additional scope than what was originally intended?
Yes, it was. We, we took advantage since we're already going to be working there for the sidewalk projects to go ahead and incorporate the two intersection projects that were part of our intersection improvements prioritization list.
Will this delay filling in the gaps of the sidewalks?
No, that's, it's, it's actually very simple work. A lot of it is striping, some of it's pedestrian ramp improvements that are part of the sidewalk construction anyway.
Okay. All right. That was it. Thank you, Mark.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Rabadi, did you have something on capital projects?
So I have a question about Airport Boulevard Extension Phase One. Could you please go over for me exactly how we got to the point where we're considering eminent domain?
I'm sorry, which body? I couldn't, for somebody I can't hear you as well.
Yeah, I don't know what the problem is.
Did you say Airport Boulevard?
I said Airport Boulevard Extension Phase One.
Okay.
I asked for an explanation of how we got to the point where we're considering eminent domain of that property. I'm not super comfortable with eminent domain.
That's a good question. I would have to go back and reference the project manager and the DOT on that, so I can certainly update you on news and notes, which is coming up in a couple of days, if you can be patient. I, it's NC DOT doing it, not us, but I will find out and let you know.
Okay. I would really appreciate that.
Sure thing.
And the only other question I had was on the Crabtree Creek Nature Park. If, let's see. Okay. So I'm seeing in the, the current cost estimate of $5.23 million. Can you, is everybody else hearing feedback off my mic?
I can hear it over here.
Okay. All right. Well, then I'm not crazy. Okay. So the construction cost estimate, the preliminary construction cost estimate of $5.23 million concerns me. If that number is preliminary, I mean, preliminary numbers only go in one direction, do you have any, any thoughts on what the, what the end construction cost is going to be?
Yes. So it's a little premature, but I will give some information related to that. So the cost estimate for this project was done by a cost estimating firm and not by the designers. So we feel pretty confident that this is on market in terms of value. We are going, we have selected a, a construction manager at risk to help us through this process. They're going to be essentially issuing bids to subcontractors. And if for some reason the project doesn't come on budget, we'll be working to revise the scope to get it on budget.
Okay. I'm wondering if it might not be a good exercise to consider revising the scope now. I mean, that's, this, the cost of this project is, is considerably more than we were, than we were originally planning. I mean, I'm not saying to redo the design, but I, I think it would be prudent to have some thoughts on where in that project we could cut costs sort of in our pocket. It appears to me very clear that we're going to have to cut some costs on this project.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but that's part of the part of grant, we can only change the scope so much?
Right. So we did receive a grant from the Parks and Recreation Trust Fund, and the amount of $500,000 and that did have a specific scope to the project and that what we would get reimbursed for under the grant. I mean, there may be some ways to value engineering a project. I don't think without going back to the drawing board that we could take, cut the project in half, just to be absolutely frank.
Right. But, I mean, the part of grant is $500,000.
Yes.
So, I mean, that is now not 20%, but 10%
Right.
of the total cost of the project. So if we shave 15% off the cost of the project, then, I mean, even if we have to return the part of grant money, I'm just saying that this, a $5.23 million price tag, I mean, I know that costs are ballooning on everything. We could probably say this about every single project on this list, but I, I think it's, it's this number that really concerns me.
I understand your concerns.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't, so I think it is mine that's doing that. I'm turning my mic off. And here I am. Okay. I think that's fine. Good balance. Was there anything else on any of the capital projects or the other, the personnel policy? Okay. Mr. Spanioli?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you. This time we're at item nine, presentations. We have two presentations tonight: retirement recognition for Lori Shadlock and Town Manager Martha Page. Martha Page will make the first presentation. Martha Page will make the first presentation.
So I'd like to invite Lori Shadlik up to stand beside me. So I have to admit that I cut a deal with Lori. She agreed to have the pre-meeting reception if I kept my comments short tonight. She really just thought she was going to clock out at five o'clock on Friday and as they say in the movies, just leave the building. I had to do some talking to get her to allow me to celebrate her years of accomplishment here in Morrisville and allow others to do so as well. I hope you were able to share your thanks and appreciation with Lori earlier this evening. So what do you say about the first person you ever spoke to in Morrisville? The person that shepherd me, shepherded me through a town manager interview process and was my first impression of the welcoming and supportive group of people that I would find here in Morrisville. What do you say about a person who has worked alongside you your entire tenure, nurtured your, your personal and professional growth, who said to me more than once, you are the town manager, you can do what you want to do, while still holding me responsible and accountable for my decisions? She has never steered me wrong, even when I didn't like what she had to say. Lori is that person for every employee in Morrisville, past and present. She listens, responds and follows through on all the questions, issues, opportunities and challenges each of our departments and employees experience, big or small. She has cultivated a small but mighty staff who have embraced these same ideals. She has always been a strong supporter and advocate for her team and they have been well served by her. Lori has too many accomplishments to note in just these short comments, but I do want to mention a few. Being an HR director is a 24-hour job. When an employee has an issue, she always took that to heart to be there for them. She was also instrumental in stabilizing our health insurance costs when the town joined N ship and which allowed us to manage the costs we have to pass on to our staff. She's been an active presence on that board and is always listening for new ways to help our employees. She has spearheaded and advocated and expanded wellness and benefit options for our staff and was my partner in the comprehensive market pay review we conducted in 2020. There have been countless performance evaluations, job classification reviews and personnel policy updates, all completed with a high degree of oversight and review by Lori. Lori and her team were at the forefront of managing our communication and attention to staff and staff needs during COVID and perhaps the highlight of her career, assisting Town Council through nine Town Manager Performance Evaluations and Goal Setting Exercises. I knew when Lori's grandson Kayden was born, visions of retirement would soon result in that conversation with her. I admit, I kept her longer than she had in mind and I am grateful for that. I wish her happiness and lots of babysitting time. Lori, thank you for 18 years of always being at the ready for our staff and thank you for being there for me. So I'm going to invite you to join Town Council. Yes, please stand for her. I'd like to present you with something you've probably seen before and have you join Council up at the podium and perhaps say a few words.
Sure, that'd be great.
I'm just, okay. Not entirely comfortable with this, as you who know me know. I do just want to say thank you and I am so grateful for my time in Morrisville. I want to say thank you to Town Council for your support of staff and your support of me personally. Thank you very much for that. I want to thank Martha Page for her leadership and her strong commitment and advocacy to our staff and all that you've done over your decade with Morrisville and us working together. Can't thank you enough for that. To my amazing HR staff for their care and commitment to our town employees. It shows, I'm not sure where they are, it shows in everything that you do and I thank you, April, Chuck and Nate, wherever you are here. There's Nate. I do have to make a pitch. I am the former, to be soon, HR Director, so I do need to say, please consider a career in local government. And of course, the town of Morrisville in particular, where you will work with some of the brightest, most well-trained, committed and caring people that I have ever had the privilege to work with. A career in local government may very well give you the purpose and the why behind a meaningful and impactful career. I have truly loved my time here and appreciate and thank everyone.
So we'll give you back the mic for the last word, but each of us would like to share some thoughts. So if I could begin, we'll go that way and then we'll, and Rabadi and Liz Johnson, who's served with you the longest, will finish it, if that's okay with everybody. Lori, you and your team are the unsung heroes of the town. You have helped us assemble and retain a world-class team, a group of people who think of others first and seek continuous improvement in everything they do to help Morrisville be the best possible place to live, learn, work and play. I wish you the best as you retire from Morrisville and I know that in the next phase of your life's journey, you will continue to help and elevate those around you. Thank you.
Sure. My only regret is that I didn't get to work with you longer and really the only times that we got to work with you in council was at, at the end of the session during closed comments and it was always late here till 11 or midnight. So I always felt terrible keeping you here late, late at night. You've, were always a good sport about it. So I wish you all the best in your retirement and spending time with your grandson and your kids as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, you've been such a, such a pleasure to work with and I didn't, I tried to look back at the years I've been on the council since 2011 and I couldn't remember one time where you weren't smiling. Even when I had a rough day or I was tired or my energy level was low, just seeing your smile, you were always so supportive of all of us. And I think that, that's something that you really brought to the staff. So I just wanted to thank you for that, for the time that we spent together, get to know each other better and I wish you all the best in your retirement and look forward to hopefully, you know, seeing again formally. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Gary Miller?
Yeah, I, I, let me start with a smile, Lori. You know, I agree, you know, we have, we were in a lot of closed sessions and a lot of heated discussions and, but your smile was still there. I said, still keep the focus, let's move forward. And, you know, again, we went through 10 evaluations and nine plus one with, for Brandon. And you were there as part of the whole process and I learned a lot from you and how to be calm and make your point across. But I got to tell this incident that happened last night, I was with the mayor of Clayton and Jody and Butch Lauter, his though, Johnson County Chair. The first thing they said, like, you know, why did I come to Clayton? Because they were scared because we have the best employees from Morrisville that they stole. And that, that's testimony of, as you rightly said, the staff here is top-notch and everyone looks for it. And Nathan, they also said they're looking for a new fire chief and I said Nathan is not ready. So by the way, so like, and, and, you know, it's this day that I still remember, I was trying to think what to say. When Sarah Gaskell was there, I still always say during economic development, get us two together, but never did I think, like, today we will be losing the two top shots. And the retirement party today is, is a little sad day, but you know, honestly, you have your legacy and looking forward. Don't be a stranger to us. And thanks for everything you do.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rabadi?
Hey Lori, you know, when I first started way back in the day, I remember that HR were the people that administered benefits and that called you up if you, you know, if you had committed some kind of transgression and it was, it was a fairly simple and somewhat mundane field. And through the years, it's evolved. And now, you know, over even the past 10 years, you know, the diversity inclusion, the diversity inclusion initiatives to, through COVID, through, you know, through, through situations that require a lot of thinking on your feet, but also a lot of empathy and a lot of really caring about the people that you're charged with. And I've always appreciated that about Morrisville and I've always appreciated that about you. So thank you very much.
Councilmember Sprague Johnson?
So this is hard for me because I've been here for the 10 years that both, you know, Martha and I have been here, but your attitude and perspective and welcoming nature was very impression noble on me. I, I felt like I'm here and I'm welcomed and I know that you treated me the same as you do every person that walks through that door. And when people have another opportunity and walk out the door, you're still very supportive and you thank them for being with us and hope the best for them in the next journey. And that is really an important part of your job. We personally worked on the family leave for the benefit for our staff. And that to me was so important that when someone brings a new family member into their home, that they get paid leave. The, the federal government has unpaid leave, but to have paid leave and to be able to have the choice to spend with your family for that bonding time and not be sleep deprived as much and be able to kind of work life balance, I'm so glad that we worked on that together and you were so helpful in helping the council appreciate, understand, you know, Frank was helpful with the law, but you were there championing for the staff. And that just shows what a big heart you have. I mean, you were not just sharing the policy, you were sharing how important it was to all of us. So thank you so much for that and I wish you all the best with your family and it's going to be a great adventure. Thank you.
Mayor Pretten Johnson?
So, you know, I always say every day in Morrisville is a good day, except today. I'm struggling myself today. Lori, the words thank you don't, don't seem adequate. Thank you for your public service. Martha mentioned that you never steered her wrong, you never steered council wrong, you never steered an employee wrong, and in the end, it's our residents that benefit from that work. So thank you very much and I want to say thank you to your family. We unfortunately had her here often very late at night and again, she was always smiling and she was always doing the great work that we know that she's done all these years, but thank you for sharing her with us. We're giving her back to you so you can have her now and your biggest supporter, oh, where did he, is he, oh, is he out of the room again? Oh, your biggest supporter was here cheering you on and we love that. So enjoy every moment of what's to come in this next chapter of your life, well-deserved retirement. And again, thank you just doesn't seem adequate, but thank you for all you've done for all of us in the town of Morrisville. We appreciate you more than I can express in words, so thank you.
Mayor, can we have our family up on the podium?
Sure, if the family would like to come up for a quick photo up front, that would be nice.
Thank you again to each and every one of you. Thank you so much for your support and your commitment to the town staff. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. On behalf of all the residents, we thank you.
Thank you.
Lori, you want to grab this? You want to hold that? Take a picture?
Did we take a picture?
No, we did not.
TJ, TJ, did we take a picture?
Sorry?
Did we take a picture, Lori?
No. She got one with Martha. She got one with Martha.
Why don't we take one?
Do you want one?
Yeah.
Lori, would you mind taking a quick picture with the council? Would that be okay? Okay.
Why not?
Did you want to take that? It's midnight, Lori.
Just for a little time, will you?
Okay.
Viling the binder.
Okay. Okay. God, this is going to be sad. We can do it, we can do it, we can do it.
So some more bittersweet on the way. Brandon Zudema, Deputy Town Manager, will assist in facilitating the next presentation.
Would you join me, please? Giselle and Jeannie, would you join me, please? So I will start by saying I'm not going to be able to do justice to this. I don't know if anyone could. And so the staff, I think, will understand this and hear this. Many of you in the audience will not be able to appreciate the influence, the transformational impact that Martha Page has had on this community over the past 10 years. And part of the reason you don't appreciate that is because she's in the background doing all the things that need to be done. If you go over the past decade, I would argue that the, what this town has accomplished in the last decade probably overcomes multiple decades before that. The work that's been accomplished with projects and with progress and with council work relations and that's all very, very important and is important to see where this town is today. But all that means nothing in comparison to who Martha is as a person and how she has dealt with our staff and her commitment to this community, but particularly to staff. And so you didn't have the opportunity to see a couple of things. Recently, our department head group was able to spend some time with Martha last week and express our appreciation to Martha for what she has done for us. I think I can safely say individually, but also collectively to develop this, this team of leaders to be here to support her and to grow under her and to learn from her. But Martha's legacy is, is many things. One of those is being the first female town manager in town history. One of those is also being the longest-serving town manager in history. But I think she would tell you that what she wants to be remembered for and clearly will be remembered for is her commitment to staff. And you can talk about that in the context of her work on budgets and compensation and benefits and, and the things that make a difference to people to live day to day. But it goes so far beyond that because Martha could walk up to any employee in this room and will start a conversation and have a memory about them or a story about them. And I just sometimes stand in awe of, how do you remember all that? And it's not that she remembers it because she thinks she has to, she remembers it because it's important to her. And that's what you would absolutely hope for in a leader. And I'm
And I will miss that. But I'll have another person that I will work with in the same way or maybe different ways. But Martha, you've been an amazing person, a role model, a person that I can look up to. And you were always, as you said about Lori, you would always tell me things that maybe I didn't want to hear, but things I needed to hear and helped me grow and expand who I was as a person professionally and personally. And I just thank you for that. And I am not going to say goodbye. But other than to say she's on my speed dial and I've told her she has to hit the green button, not the red button.
Well, Martha, a lot has been said. I am definitely grateful for the opportunity that you have given me to join the team, but also for everything that you have done for all of the employees in the town. You have created and fostered a great environment, a great teamwork and collaborative environment. We are a very high achieving organization because you have promoted a level of high level of excellence, but also because you have provided, promoted great teamwork about, with staff, great collaboration among staff. And Martha always has, for those of you that haven't had the opportunity to work with her and for those of you that have will know this is right, she always has a perspective you have never thought about it. And I really like that about, about her because she's pushing you to the limits to think beyond what's just in front of your eyes. So thank you for challenging us and helping us see this. There is something beyond that we really need to see for the benefit of this community. You really represent what is to have a passion for public service. And I'd say you thank you because you have been a great model, not only for me, but for many in the organization.
I will close, and I think I can say this on behalf of staff, our commitment to you is to keep what you started going. We're here to make sure that this continues, this town continues to grow, to move forward, that we continue to make a priority of how we treat people, whether that's people in the community or our staff or others. So we will do our absolute best to continue that for you. Thank you.
So we're going to do a little bit of that again. At this time, I'm going to read a proclamation about Martha. And then each of us are going to say a few words and then we're going to gather with Martha up front. And then she will have the final word on this. So this is a proclamation recognizing town manager Martha Page's 10 years of service to the town of Morrisville and its residents. Whereas town council appointed Martha Page as town manager, the town's first female manager on September 23rd, 2013, and she has chosen to retire from local government service as of October 1st, 2023, after serving as the longest tenured manager in the history of the town of Morrisville. And whereas town manager Page has provided exemplary service to the town council and her staff through her commitment to enabling town council to achieve their goals and priorities and by advocating for and supporting staff to make Morrisville a productive, engaging, and the best place to work through career development opportunities, succession planning, and through her personal touch with each of her employees. And whereas town manager Page has provided exemplary service to the community and our residents through her leadership in areas such as budget and financial capacity, including being the smallest community to receive AAA credit ratings from all three rating agencies, designation of Morrisville as an All-American City in 2021, proactive leadership of community enrichment and growth, including the Morrisville Carpenter Road Improvement Projects, the Advancement of the Town Center Project, and the town's future Dog Park, and through her volunteer work with the Morrisville Community Emergency Response Team and the Morrisville Veterans Memorial Foundation. And whereas town manager Page has also served her profession beyond Morrisville in many ways, including as the president of the North Carolina City and County Management Association on various NCC CMA committees as an active member of the International City County Management Association, or ICMA, as an ICMA credentialed manager, and through her work with the University of North Carolina's School of Government. Now therefore, be it resolved on behalf of the town council, the town employees, and the residents of Morrisville, that the town council expresses to Martha Page our sincere appreciation for her numerous contributions and distinguished service as Morrisville town manager for the last 10 years and extends our best wishes on her retirement. So thank you so much for that. And if it's okay with everybody, we'll just do the same as we did last time with Mayor Protem finishing for us. So Martha, I am glad that you were able to build so many strong relationships during your time here in Morrisville. I am proud of the work we have all done together, notably the town's first strategic plan, the Kremen Parkway Extension, our station number three, our master sustainability plan leading solar panels, fleet of electrification, and increased free preservation, recognition as an All-American City, creating a destination for world-class cricket, enhancing our parks amenities, and finally connecting all compass points of the town safely through greenway and sidewalk connectivity. You and I know there is much more, and these are just a few of the accomplishments which help all our residents to live connected and live well. You have been instrumental in taking our town to the next level of professionalism, resident engagement, and transparency. All of us here in town will reap the benefits of your efforts for years to come. Thank you and best wishes. Councilmember Fender?
Martha, I wish you all the best in retirement. I really enjoyed working with you. Four more years is not enough. I feel jealous of the others that have had a chance to work with you longer. And I hope we'll still cross paths in Morrisville. Hope we still get to go on our walks and talk and not just talk about the town.
Councilmember Raub?
Yes. I'm sorry. I got a little caught in the emotion of it all. I just, first of all, want to say that I remember the time I saw Martha's name on, in that room back there in a closed session. I just was like, that's the person I want as a town manager. We were so excited when we voted for her. And I still say it was the best vote I ever made. And, you know, over the years, what I saw was her relationship building skills, which are incredible, really being the face of the town in so many ways, so well respected across the state, which I think helped Morrisville tremendously, all of us. A problem solver, even during the pandemic, we had to ship things, but she could think quickly, she could navigate, build a strategy. And while all this was going on, developing a culture of continuous innovation, developing a world-class staff, where our team started winning all kinds of awards, smart cities and, you know, All-American City and all these great things. And so like any good team, I think you need someone in the back that's calling the plays and doing it so well. And she did that. And I just want to thank you for that. On a personal note, I just want to thank you for being such a great friend. You're one of the smartest women I've ever known. And when we had disagreements, I would know that, like, you know, you were firm enough to tell me, I think you're wrong on this. And I'd get kind of nervous when I met with you because I knew you would tell me firmly, this is what I think. And I really, really respect that. And I think that you're a very special person and you're going to be missed, but hopefully you're going to be in Morrisville still, so I'm not going to say this is a goodbye. It's just a new, a new beginning. So I just want to thank you for being such a great friend, manager, and wish you well. You and Derwick, your husband and your family, a wonderful retirement. I know he's probably very, very happy now. Thank you.
Councilmember Caramella?
Well, I don't know where to start from. I can go on. How many, how many hours do I have? So, but nevertheless, you know, professionally, I want to start by saying I had the honor working with her eight years of the tenure she was here. And the town budget was only $16 million when I first joined, and now it is $42 million. So you can see the amount of growth that has happened over a period of time. And it, as Brandon has said, you can see her car every weekend outside in the parking lot. She'll be working and working and, and also she will carry like several bags at every flight she wants to go. And I had to carry sometimes like one bag, two bags. I said, how many do you want to carry? You know, like, but nevertheless, you know, very, very thorough. Every word that, you know, comes to us is being read through with all angles. And she protected the staff, as Brandon said, but also protected us. It's pretty much, I feel like she had seven kids here that she had to, you know, maintain the kind of, you know, our internal egos or you can say internal issues, but she was fair to each one of them and had the rapport of coming and talking to each one of them. And there were issues, you know, where, you know, she acknowledged, you know, hey, this is, didn't work properly and was up front. And that's what I liked. I liked so many things that, like Brandon and others, she has a habit of writing everything in. If you're absurd, she will keep on writing, typing and typing and typing. And like, I said, like, hey, this meeting two months ago, I was talking something and she'll go back, okay, you talked this, you know? And she's so meticulous in everything and that is a testimony. The other professional thing, like, there's always a synonym. If I go to anywhere in North Carolina, I say, I'm from Morrisville, to any of the people that say, do you know Steve Raub? That's what comes out. But, 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 but in, in the managers association and the managers, if I go and say, hey, I'm from Morrisville, they, first thing they'll come and say, you have a wonderful manager. And that's how she has elevated Morrisville in the entire map of North Carolina as being a person who is well respected and well believed in. And that is, that makes me happy because when people all across come and say, you have a great manager, it's, it only makes us feel much better and happy. On a personal level, you know, as everyone has a rapport, you know, I still remember when I had my instant of brown rickle spider. I was 45 days in the hospital. She didn't have to do that, but she came almost every other day to check on me, to ensure that I was alive and I will be alive, you know? Like I was going through 14 surgeries and every other day and like Todd Wright and others coming every day. And it, it basically made me very happy going through that process. It was not, it had its challenges, but I felt like I was welcomed and, you know, cared about. And on a more personal level, like I worked 20, 21 years for AT&amp;T. And I wanted to move for a job. I like, I said, I'm tired, you know? And my resume was 21 years old. And I said, only for the reason of that updating the resume, I didn't want to change the job. And she said, no, no, let me, let me take a stab at it. And, you know, all night she basically said, this is what it looks like, you know? I don't, I'm not a technical person. This is what, it would be better. So that basically was an eye opener for me. And the first interview I had with GSK and they hired me. And I was saying, wow, you know, resume does matter, but she knows how to shape, you know, how to write it. I learned a lot of skills, reading and presentation. And I can go on, but I want to say, Martha, you'll be really missed. And, and the only worry now I have is Derwick and Jelly Beans will not know what to do because you'll be most of the time home. And I think, Derwick, we may have to hire you back, you know? And I'm jealous of Derwick because she goes to all the cool places because he knows how to book all the good resorts. But Martha, thank you for all that you do.
Councilmember Abadi?
Never have the words "thank you" been so woefully inadequate. I have a story about the first time I met you. I remember that it was four, just about four years ago. And you were telling me everything that was involved in being a town council member. And I was just shutting down. Like, there was so much stuff. And all of a sudden, you just stopped talking and reached across and patted my hand and said, don't worry, I'll help you. And I think that's been the defining theme of our relationship for the, at least the first couple of years. I learned something from you every day about how to be a leader, how to problem solve, how not to be afraid to tackle the hard stuff. And I was just thinking that when the same person that, that coordinates the council retreat and presents you with a budget is also the person who will let you change into your Smoresville t-shirt in the backseat of her car because you were late and forgot yours, you've really got something there. You know, I'm looking back on so many lunches, so many laughs, so many tears, and I'm definitely not saying goodbye either. Thank you for being an advocate for the staff, a trusted partner and ally to the council. Thank you for leaving us a management team that can, is fully capable of never replacing you, because nobody could, but of brilliantly succeeding you as you've trained them all to do. Thank you for starting as a colleague and ending up as a friend.
Councilmember Scruggins-Johnson?
Thank you, mayor. Earlier this month, I wrote a letter to Martha and I told her that I would read it tonight. So I'm going to try to get through it. Because I usually don't give formal speeches, I usually speak from the heart. But I think tonight, I think I will read a very thoughtful and important testimony to Martha. And here it is. It says, "To Martha Page, Town Manager, congratulations on your retirement. Almost 10 years ago, you started your new role as the Morrisville Town Manager, and I was a newly elected town council member. I've had a front row seat in seeing your personal and professional growth as an outstanding leader. You have transformed the small town of Morrisville into a highly respected municipality that has received local, state, and national recognition. And you did this by putting people first. As I reflected on your tenure with the town, I wanted to give you a lasting memento that would illustrate your legacy and remind you of our journey together. I found a simple wooden bowl that was handcrafted in my favorite mill in Holland, Michigan. What you don't know, Martha, is I bought one for me so that I could remember you. And I will explain why this bowl is like it is. I think it's important for everybody to understand. The bowl itself represents you. You have provided a solid foundation to the town, the staff, the town council, and the community. You kept us forward thinking, you inspired us to think big, and you kept us safe. So this bowl has small circles and they represent empowerment. You gave your staff the flexibility to explore, to learn, and to grow. You inspired me to step forward and take on the role of Mayor Protem a few years ago. You've motivated leaders across the state to embrace challenges. You gave us oxygen and courage."
I was a newly-elected Town Council Member. I've had a front-row seat in seeing your personal and professional growth as an outstanding leader. You have transformed the small town of Morrisville into a highly-respected municipality that has received local, state, and national recognition, and you did this by putting people first. As I reflected on your tenure with the town, I wanted to give you a lasting memento that would illustrate your legacy and remind you of our journey together. I found a simple wooden bowl that was handcrafted in my favorite mill in Holland, Michigan. What you don't know, Martha, is I bought one for me so that I could remember you. And I will explain why this bowl is like it is. I think it's important for everybody to understand. The bowl itself represents you. You have provided a solid foundation to the town, the staff, the town council, and the community. You kept us forward-thinking, you inspired us to think big, and you kept us safe. So this bowl has small circles, and they represent empowerment. You gave your staff the flexibility to explore, to learn, and to grow. You inspired me to step forward and take on the role of Mayor Pro Tem a few years ago. You've motivated leaders across the state to embrace challenges. You gave us oxygen and courage. The large circles represent your legacy. Morrisville is an amazing town with top-quality leaders at every level. You walk the walk. You show others how to be effective. These circles represent the individuals that have served Morrisville and have moved on in their life journey. Those individuals are making a positive impact in their next chapters across the region and the state. You not only made our town stronger, but inspired others to make our world a better place. I will certainly miss you. I consider you not just a colleague, but a friend. So I wish you all the best in your next chapter." And then I had a PS, because this is a standard letter, and I can do that. And I said, "P.S. I have always been a pine cone enthusiast, and I, I printed this letter on the old letterhead, and tonight I'm wearing the old town logo with, that has a pine cone, so in honor of you, Martha. So thank you so much for your service. I will miss you dearly, and I will remember you every time I look at this bowl."
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson.
So I too had to write my comments down, Martha, and I'm still not sure I'm going to be able to get through it. So, so first, I want to congratulate and thank Town Manager Martha Page on her amazing and successful career in public service. I'm grateful she chose to spend the last 10 years of her career in Morrisville. At the time the town council hired Martha, I said she was the right person at the right time in Morrisville's history to lead our town government. These past 10 years have proven that statement true. The programs and initiatives that Martha has spearheaded were a positive, innovative change to the town of Morrisville. She has left a legacy to be very proud of, and that will impact our town for years to come. As elected officials and staff, our hope is to make Morrisville a better place than it was when we got here. Morrisville is a much better place because of Martha Page. I'm grateful for her professionalism and dedication to a town we both love. You are a true public servant and the longest-serving town manager in Morrisville's history, which is very, something to be very, very proud of. Over the last few weeks and months, as I talk to residents, members of the business community, and our partners across the triangle, Martha's retirement has been a hot topic. In majority of those conversations, and Deputy Town Manager Zudimavens used the word tonight, but in a majority of those conversations, the word transformative was referenced time and time again. The word transformative encompasses Martha's contribution to this growing town we call home. Martha has transformed our town government with a focus on employees and empowering each person to be their very best. Martha has made a positive impact on each and every person she has worked with. Morrisville is the best place to work in municipal government, and our residents, the business community, and the business community benefit. Martha's positive reach extends beyond the town of Morrisville's borders. Martha has held leadership roles in statewide organizations and has mentored town managers across North Carolina. Morrisville and the state of North Carolina have benefited, benefited from Martha's leadership and experience. And there are some other very important people in Martha's life that I want to thank, and we'll be able to thank them on Thursday night as well at the reception for Martha here in Town Hall. But her family, I want to thank Martha's family. To Martha's husband, Derwick, thank you for sharing Martha with us. Spouses of those serving in government are affected by the work that we do and sacrifice a great deal. The missed family events, rearranged birthday celebrations, and interrupted family vacations are just some of the sacrifices that come with the dedication to public service. To all Martha's family, thank you for supporting her these 10 years and enabling her to be the best town manager for Morrisville. I told you I wasn't going to make it through, I'm almost done. I will miss you greatly, and I will miss your innate ability to solve every problem we have encountered with grace, dignity, and expertise. It has been a pleasure to work alongside you. I have gained so much from our working relationship, and I am a better elected official because of you, Martha. Thank you for your service. I wish you all the best in this very well-deserved retirement.
So we have a couple of gifts for you, if you'd like to come up, and we'll all come to the front and take a picture, and then we'll step back so you can say a few words if you wish.
So this is the proclamation that they already tonight, and each one of us has signed this proclamation from Martha and we have printed it for her so that she can have it hanging in her home. Thank you.
This is the P to Morrisville. So we are proud that she remains in Morrisville. She has done so much to make it a better place, and we are grateful for all of her service and all of your efforts and your friendship with everyone here. So that is also for you. Thank you.
So, yeah, no, we, we, we've got Martha's flowers tonight, and they match what you're wearing. When I saw her earlier today, it was written coming at the car station. I thought, well, it was all in.
That's pretty perfect. We'll put these by your seat, and you can address, we'll just put the proceeds.
Absolutely.
Thank you, ma'am. So when I got that call in August of 2013, that I had been selected as the Town Manager for Morrisville, I was certainly excited about the opportunity, but little did I know how rewarding and fulfilling these next 10 years would be for me. Thank you to town council, town staff, and the many people living and working in Morrisville and Wake County that have contributed to my experience as the Town Manager. I'm grateful beyond words, although I will have lots more to say on Thursday. I've worked hard to be a responsible, responsive, and fair Town Manager. I have learned from many people along the way, and they have made me a better Town Manager and with whom I've developed a great many friendships that I know will continue to grow. I'm proud of the many, many things we have accomplished together and know that more good things will come in the future, especially town center and a dog park. I appreciate greatly all the wonderful things about this community and the people who live and work here. I am honored to say I have loved this job every day, and I am proud to have served Morrisville, and thank you for all of your support along my path. Thank you.
Would Attorney Gray like to say a few words?
I'm on a video for Thursday, so I may save it for Thursday as well.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Those are a couple of presentations which are very tough to follow, but we'll keep on going through the agenda. We are now at item 10, Public Address. Town Clerk Smith will now present any public comments received, and we'll recognize the in-person speakers for their three minutes. I'd like to indicate that the in-person speakers, please state your name and residential address for the record, and when three minutes have elapsed, there will be a sound and the clock will turn red. At that time, please complete that thought, and feel free to provide any additional thoughts to us via email. Also, if there is someone in front of you who's already said most of your points, feel free to come up and say, most of what I want to say was already said, I'd like to echo that, and any other points. So we don't need to necessarily hear the same thing multiple times out of respect for everyone's time. And at this time, I'd like to recognize Town Clerk Smith, please. Is your mic on?
A little better? Okay, we do have a number of individuals sign up to give in-person public comment. Just to ensure that there wasn't any confusion between those wanting to give public comment, you know, on an open floor versus those that want to give comment directly to the TOD item. When I call your name, if you were attempting to give comment related to the TOD item, if you could just let me know, we'll hold those comments until we get to that item, as this moment is just for those wanting to give public, public address to council. So the first individual signed up is Susan Niguyan.
If you'll please approach that microphone there and your name and residential address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Susan Nguyen. My address is 1216 Forestville Lane, Morrisville. Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Susan Nguyen, and I'm representing families from the neighborhood of Providence Place, Mason Farms, Shiloh Grove, and Hamlet Park on Church Street. We would like your help opposing the Wake County School Board's 2024-2025 Student Enrollment Proposal to reassign us from Parkside Elementary to Pleasant Grove Elementary. We surveyed over 170 families, and 99% wished to remain at Parkside. Right now, as we speak, the Wake County School Board is in a meeting assigning our students to a middle school 14 miles away from home. These are some reasons why we wish to stay at Parkside. First, our children need stability. We have been reassigned from Cedar Fork to Carpenter Elementary to Parkside. This is the fourth base school change in the past 10 years. Some children had to change to three schools, even though they did not move. Second, Parkside is the most proximate to our neighborhoods. The bus, bus ride to Pleasant Grove Elementary would take about twice as long because of traffic and distance. A longer bus ride increases the chances of bullying. Third, it is operationally inefficient to put additional strain on the shortage of bus drivers. Fourth, older children and their siblings will have the opportunity to stay at Parkside without transportation, which will cause hardship on parents. There would be more traffic to the already congested corner of Church and McCrimmon, where you are also considering rezoning to allow 4,000 new apartments. Also, students whose family cannot provide transportation will be disenfranchised. All students deserve stability in their education and surroundings. Research consistently points to the adverse psychological effects frequent changes can have on a child's sense of security, academic performance, and social growth. Overall, the Wake County School Board disregarded their principles of stability, proximity, operational efficiency, and student achievement when they proposed to reassign Church Street communities from Parkside Elementary to Pleasant Grove. Please help us oppose the 2014-2025 Student Enrollment Proposal. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And for the record, let's note that there were two, 12, 14. I count 16 people who stood in support of her speech. Nope, no, it's fine. I was just acknowledging that for the record, but a resident just shared that there was 50 additional people at Providence Place that would have come if they felt that there was room in the room. Thank you very much for sharing that, sir. Well, we're going to recognize the people who signed up, and then if, if you hadn't signed up, I'll recognize and give people the opportunity at that time. So Town Clerk Smith? And just so everyone knows, this is not a back and forth generally, but I wanted to acknowledge your statement.
The next person signed up to give in-person public comment is Kathy Sales.
Hello. My name is Kathy Sales. I live at 1209 Summers. I've been a Morrisville resident since 2008, and I'm currently the HOA president in Kits Creek. Some of this was covered, so I'm going to try to skip through. So it's a little disjointed, that's why. You have been hearing from a number of our neighbors in Kits Creek and Providence Place regarding our strenuous objection to the Wake County School System Redistricting Plan of Draft One. You have been sent copies of this document. It does an excellent job of succinctly providing our statement against Draft One. Please do read through it. It's just a few pages, and it's been prepared jointly by a large group of your constituents. In a nutshell, the changes to the base school for Kits Creek goes against the need for stability for our students and at their most proximate school. Kits Creek families are being kicked out of our most proximate school to make room for hypothetical future students from new apartments. We need your support and your help to prevent the addition of the new apartments destabilizing students whose families have already fought so hard for proximity. Kits Creek received its Austin Ridge school assignment in 2019. Now, unless their family can shoulder an immense burden of transportation, children who started kindergarten in 2018 will be at a third base school before they even reach the age to graduate from elementary school, and that does not even include the pandemic impact. Three different schools over a five-year period offers our children no stability and prevents a sense of belonging. When you look at the map that was presented in Draft One, it appears that Pleasant Grove is a proximate option. Understanding the path that the bus will take to, from Kits Creek and Providence Place to Pleasant Grove will show otherwise. The current infrastructure will take the bus through to Davis Drive already halfway to our current school and require the use of RTP infrastructure that is already stressed out during rush hour with its current traffic load. It will require more buses because we don't use Briar Creek currently. In addition to not meeting the school system stated goals of proximity and stability, concerns with operational inefficiency, operational efficiency, and student achievement are also described compellingly in this document. Members of our neighborhood are participating in the virtual feedback session for Draft One right now, or they would be here with me tonight to show you their resolve. In their stead, 441 of them have signed a document to send with me to demonstrate their commitment in only the last 48 hours or so. We were only given a few days to react to Draft One. If we had more time, you'd hear from many more. You will receive a copy of the 441. Know that members of our community have reached out to Morrisville Education Advisory Committee and asked for their support and for what they are working on in regard to Draft One. We will continue to reach out, likely, yet likely due to the very short timeframe, we haven't yet connected. What are we asking you for? First, please read our input as you've received an email. And second, you were behind us when we fought for proximity just a few short years ago. We need you to do the same now as we fight for proximity again and stability this time as a bright future for, and a bright future for our Morrisville students from Kits Creek and Providence Place. Please keep, please help us keep Kits Creek districted to, excuse me, Austin Ridge Elementary. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The next individual signed up to give in-person public comment is Ricky Z. Ricky Z, 1009 Jewelstone. Okay. Prakash V, was that also? Barik Joshi? Yes, sir, that's all the individuals signed up to give in-person public comment. I do believe we may have some individuals that were unable to sign up.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to ask anyone in the room who would like to address this body for three minutes, not on the TOD, but for public address, to please approach the microphone. And if there's more than one, you can kind of form up a line up against the wall to save time, sir, so you can be next. Your name and address for the record, please, sir?
Yeah, my name is Kevin O'Connor, the 1001 Hemby Ridge Lane. I agree with everything everybody has already said, but I want to talk about Martha. My first interaction with her was when my new councilmember neighbor was on the board. My first interaction with her was when my new council member neighbor was on the board. She had to kind of keep him in check, sort of. So Martha's been nothing but professional, and this town has grown so much because of her. We have a library, we have solar panels, we have Carpenter Fire Station Road that's bigger now, we have the McCrimmon Extension that's bigger now. So Town Hall Drive just doesn't sound right. So I know this isn't a back and forth, so I'd like to make a suggestion. Martha Page Boulevard. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And we generally discourage clapping from the audience, but when a council member does it, I can't say no. Your name and residential address for the record, please, sir?
My name is Tiam Kandanulu, 221 Joy Cliff Drive, Morrisville. I 100% agree with all the school issues mentioned, but I have a question for mayor and all the councilmen. I'm not sure. Okay. I'll just lift it easy. So do you guys really... I know, this is my first time, I'm just coming to the council. If I say anything incorrectly, please forgive me. And before you give any new communities or business approvals or something, have you ever really considered that will there be more people are coming in? It will be difficult for the people of the schools and all those things? The reason... I mean, you guys are more experts than me. I'm just sharing as a common man, and if you... Anything don't make sense, just you can ignore. Because Wake County School System is doing this just because we see that new communities like mushrooms in Morrisville. We have not seen any infrastructure development. We have not seen any education, new schools or anything. I just heard from Mr. Garmilla said that when he was joined, there was a $16 million Morrisville budget. It increased to 150% to $42 million budget, and we still are at the same place, and we are not seeing any facilities or improved or anything. So my question to all the councilmen and mayor is, do you really consider when we're giving any approval to the new communities or new business that is it going to help to the community or is it going to hurt to the community like how we are just having all the issues? From 2030, and I'm living here, every year it's a nightmare for us just with the new traffic. Thank you.
Thank you. And we're waiting until he clears the area so the next speaker can come forward. Your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes, sir.
My name is Subha Reddy, 113 Elm Heaven Way. Good evening. I know I just came from the international travels. Pardon me if any lagging. So I support 100% the families who have come to it. I'm so surprised to see this lot of families and who are also sitting outside the town hall. So that's been... It's one of the requests also I have mentioned in the annual meeting. If we can consider to acquire the land that is available, 28 acres, to accommodate this, to rebuild this town hall, to accommodate that 50 families, because this is not sufficient. That's the one request. And one more thing is, I 100% support them. I'm happy to work with you if anything that we as a families and as a citizen of the Morrisville, I'm happy to assist and work on these kind of issues. I have a last one. I don't know whether I can... There is a letter I have written to the mayor regarding the TOD, so I'm not sure whether I can say this in the public comments. If you give me opportunity on the next item, I can read this letter. Thank you.
Yeah, if you signed up for public comments, public hearing comments, you'll be welcome to speak more than once tonight, once on the TOD. So you'll have a chance then.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Your name and address for the record, please, sir? You'll have three minutes.
My name is Raj Latta. I'm at 104 Joy Cliff Drive in Morrisville, NC. I'm a parent, and I have two kids. The way Wake County treats their elder child when a new child or a new resident moves in is throw or toss away the first child or do not respect the first child. What I mean by that is, when we have existing residents who were assigned certain school at some time in past, why are we forced or asked to go to a different school now? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And I think we can do the next speaker while he's filling that sheet out. Thank you, sir.
My name is Bhaskar Roy. I am from 1120 Forestville Lane, and that's also unfortunately falls in the... I mean, I'm lucky to be there with all my fellow residents, but unfortunately falls in the same area. Both my kids have gone beyond high school now, but I'm here only to support because unfortunately we have seen the same thing. All of the members who have talked about three school assignments, they have been very generous in stating that. My daughter started from Cedar Fork, went to Weatherstone, then she was assigned to East Cary. From there, she goes to Alston Ridge, and then she gets another assignment. So in total, there have been five assignments. She started from elementary to the middle school ending. And that is what I just wanted to say, nothing more. So hope that reiterates and tells you the importance of all these kids, all of their future in your hands only. I understand that Wake County School System is doing this, but as a town, all of us have to go there and raise our voices to tell them that this is just not fair. We do not care about taxes, we don't care about budgets, but this is about our kids' futures. So we cannot do this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Was there anyone else in the audience who wanted to give three minutes of thoughts on anything other than TOD? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to the next agenda item. And like I mentioned, this isn't a back and forth. We're not going to answer questions right now, but we have heard you, staff has heard you, and I was heartened to hear that there was already a lot of people participating in the virtual meeting to the school board because they are the real wielders of the power here. But we as a group have as much interest in making sure that your children have good, sound educations, and that's why we created the Morrisville Public Education Committee a few years ago. So I hope that's okay for me to speak on behalf of the council saying that. Okay, so now we're at item 11, action items, and y'all are welcome to stay if you wish, or you can watch the rest virtually or whatever you like, but whatever you like. We always enjoy people participating. There are two action items on this evening's agenda. A resolution adopting the bidder prequalification requirements for Crabtree Creek Nature Park and approval of the transit-oriented development and zoning plan. Mark Spanioli, Director of Engineering, will facilitate the first item. Mr. Spanioli?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, council members. Mark Spanioli, Director of Engineering, for the record. Item number 11A is a resolution adopting the bidder prequalification requirements for Crabtree Creek Nature Park project. Just a little background, recently, we completed the design and permitting for the project. The town was also awarded a Parks and Recreation Trust Fund grant in the amount of $500,000 towards the project. As we move forward, staff has determined the best construction delivery method right now is the construction manager at risk method. The C.M., the construction manager at risk, will prequalify bidders, manage the construction of all subcontractors, and will enter into a guaranteed maximum price bid once we've received all the bids from the subcontractors. NC General... North Carolina General Statutes requires that the local government adopt bidder prequalification requirements prior to C.M. or C.M. at risk performing any bid solicitations on behalf of the local government. So in your package is a copy of the prequalification requirements that we have made part of the resolution, and our staff is recommending approval of the resolution adopting the town and Morrisville prequalification requirements for the Crabtree Creek Nature Park in accordance with NC General Statutes. Some additional information, just for background, this item does not obligate any funds or constitute a contract award at this point for construction. In November, we'll be back here with a brief in action for construction award and a Capitol Project Ordinance Amendment. So I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Does council have any questions? We're scheduled to be briefed and vote on this tonight, so... Okay. I would entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. I recognize Mayor Lieutenant Johnson.
I'd make a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-344-0 of the Morrisville Town Council adopting the bidder prequalification requirements for the Crabtree Creek Nature Park project.
Motion is second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries 7-0 unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Spanioli.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Our next item will be facilitated by Chris Lawson, our planning manager.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Good evening. I have a few things I'd like to cover tonight to follow up on my presentation from the 12th. The first thing I'd like to do is just kind of explain again where the town is in adopting a transit-oriented development district, what this specific agenda item would approve, and then a few things that I've added to the agenda items since the last meeting. So the first thing is, where did the transit-oriented development district come from? So that... It's been in a number of plans over the town, the towns adopted over the years, from the '99 land use plan to the 2009 land use plan to 2013, when there was a McCrimmon small area transit plan adopted. It was also included in the 2021 land use plan. So this plan is based on that 21 land use plan, and it is a more detailed visionary document for the TOD zoning district. So the 21 land use plan identified parcels in town, three areas that were deemed suitable for transit-oriented development sometime in the future. This specific plan adopts a more specific vision for the TOD area. And so why I wanted to leave that off tonight was I've received calls and emails since my last presentation, which talk about zoning and the zoning regulations. This plan is not zoning. It is the vision, just like the land use plan is. So I just wanted to clarify that right off the get-go. So this plan will adopt the town's vision for future zoning text amendments that could be presented to council. Thanks for that. So since the September 12th meeting, I've added two additional attachments onto the agenda item. The first one was requested was the Longfellow Site Plan, which shows the site plan that was submitted prior to rezoning these parcels to the TOD zoning district. That's attachment... It's attachment five. The second item was entitled, "It Frequently Asked Questions." It could be also called a one- or two-pager, just some more background information on the TOD district. You know, why Morrisville, why this area of Morrisville? And then some other information about other towns in Wake County that are planning for a TOD, a transit-oriented district. Additionally, it includes information about the hub RTP, which is a TOD-based development in the RTP. And then finally, this frequently asked question shows a map of rail projects across the state, including several in Wake County. And then the Wake County Transit Plan, which shows the future rapid bus line that's proposed to run through Morrisville and specifically adjacent to the TOD. The other thing I'd like to touch back on is Church Street. There was a lot of discussion about Church Street at the last meeting, and I want to highlight some items that are in the plan itself and then changes that were made to the resolution. Eric, do I have a right mouse? Oh, there you go. Okay, thanks. All right, so the first things I'd like to highlight are, there are two areas of the TOD that are adjacent to Church Street. So it's the TOD West, and it's also... So it's TOD West, which is adjacent to Church Street, directly across from Church Street Park and the Cricket Pitch. And then the TOD South, which is south of McCrimmon, also access along Church Street. So within the plan itself, there were two areas that were added just here at the bottom. I'll highlight one of them for you, and it just says, "The town should evaluate widening and other improvements to Church Street with future comprehensive transportation plan updates." So that was on this page and on the TOD South conceptual plan. Again, I'll highlight here at the bottom. This language was taken from the plan since the last meeting and was added into the resolution itself, which... As number three. So again, in the resolution, it's added that if this were approved, if this plan were approved, "The town should evaluate widening and other improvements to Church Street with future transportation plan updates." And this language can be adjusted, should council wish. So again, to recap the process and explain where this plan is, this is not the zoning itself. That will come after the vision is adopted. Town staff and the consultants with Hazel Levine will take the adopted vision, whatever that looks like, and design zoning text amendments and other regulatory measures to install the town's vision. And then we don't project that that will be ready for council's review till sometime next year. That's my follow-up I have tonight. Sorry, my notes, I wrote pretty sloppy, so that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Garamella?
Yeah, thanks, Chris. What I would like... Thanks for adding that line. It's helpful, but at the same time, I would like the town staff to go back and see what has to be done in terms of TIA and other traffic studies, because we hear from the residents that this is a continuous issue of Church Street and McCrimmon becoming a bottleneck. Our plan does not call for it. So we have events like the cricket and other things, they pretty much show the area, but with the TOD and the high number of apartments that will be coming and plus the businesses, and it will be, I'm sure it will be one of the most vibrant areas of the town, that will also increase the traffic in that area. So for me, it is be widely and cautiously look into this issue, and I would request staff to go into details what needs to be done. I'm not an engineer, but I would let you guys figure that out and come up with a plan how we can improve, because we better improve now than later, because this is our last chance to do it. That's my two cents.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fender, please.
So I'm in agreement with Councilmember Garamella. I think we need to further flesh out what can be done to address Church Street Park before approving the TOD land plan, a land development plan. One of the things, I was just thinking through, and I don't know how big of a deal it would be, is there any possibility of breaking off the TOD East portion and being able to... I know we're under some pressure to go ahead and get that area... I don't know what you want to call it, firmed up, put the design in place before any more development occurs in that section with... So that that can keep moving forward while staff continues looking at the TOD West parcel or area.
Sure, and that's in relation to Church Street?
Yeah, because of Church Street. I don't feel comfortable in approving this tonight because of Church Street, but I'm just wondering, like, if we... If there's any... If... I'm just putting the idea out there. If it makes sense to, if I know we are wanting to firm up TOD East, would it be possible to split that off and get that part approved?
So the answer directly, yes. I think there is some way to do that, but my longer... my longer answer would be that clearly there's a lot of interest in studying Church Street. I think one of the things that would be helpful is understanding what is the town's vision for these areas on Church Street? And when Church Street's studied, then we have that set vision. So I think as, as staff, it would still be preferred to keep all three together, knowing that the zoning and any regulatory changes won't occur, won't occur with this plan. But, but with this plan, we know what the vision is, if the models that Hazel Levine created are somewhat accurate, and, and using that, it could help study Church Street in addition with Church Street Park and the Cricket Pitch.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying. I'm just thinking, I think, it seems like we continue, I mean, the condition of Church Street, and it continuing to be only two lanes with a turning, or a left turn lane periodically, comes up all the time with every new development. And it seems like we just keep kicking the can down the road. Granted, what Councilmember Garamella is speaking to, and what I agree with, is not going to solve the entire problem. But given the amount of traffic that's already occurring on Church Street, the amount of development that has occurred with the additional town homes south of McCrimmon, the potential development north of McCrimmon, I just think we need to be more definitive of what we're going to do in front of Church Street. I feel like we keep trying to sweep it under the rug and not really focus on it and solve the problem, and it's just going to keep lingering out there for years. I mean, we've had the problem for years as it is.
Sure. Yeah, I, yep, I understand. And, and Hazel Levine wasn't consulted, and they're not the traffic experts, but completely understand with the quickly evolving things that happen in Morrisville, the great growth here. But I, I still think, just answering as you said, that keeping the three together, understanding what council's vision, and then the, the resolution included some additional language about widening and evaluating Church Street. If that language, if there's some tweak to that language that I could include either in the plans or in the resolution, I'd be interested in that, too. And, and really, I, I've said this a few times, but the reason I, I say that just is because, you know, this plan, just like in the land use plan process, we had a lot of questions about, well, we need to save trees now, park space, other things. It was the visioning, whereas this is also the visioning, and the, the regulatory measures can come later, right? So, thank you.
I hear you.
Okay. Councilmember Boddy, please.
So I would like to be really crystal clear on, has, has there, do we know exactly what improvements are possible on Church Street? Like, has that, are we talking about doing that study sometime in the future, or are we doing, like, I think we've done?
It, okay. Give me an answer. I don't know.
I said, do we have any study that tells us what is possible to do with Church, like, can we widen, or, like, it's all the way down, just an example, of what we're promising, but can we do that?
Sure.
Can we, in front of Church Street Park and the, the TOD? Like, do we know what's possible? Because I can't, I find it difficult to vision anything until I know that everything we vision in that, in that space isn't going to pour out onto a two-lane road, you know?
I don't have a great answer, but I think, I think it depends, because I've heard, you know, since this process started, I've heard a number of things along Church Street, which is, you know, received public comment emails saying, "We want four-laning, four-laning Church Street." Without getting in a back-and-forth, I want to know, how far up Church Street? What is actually required? What are you basing these numbers on? Is it, is it just four-laning, or is it, are there more specific things that should be included? You know, I think some of the, some of the, the transportation plan, the one we have now, took, I think, three, four, or five years to adopt, and a lot of that was the public outreach. So, you know, we've received emails saying, "We want a four-lane Church Street," but I think I've also talked to people in different neighborhoods, and maybe they don't want it all the way up Church Street. We don't want Church Street to become another McCrimmon, Davis Drive, or something like that. So I think it would be interesting to see what, what a, what a true, you know, experienced traffic engineer could say, looking at numbers, looking at, is all of Church Street need to be widened, is it an area specifically around the TOD? Are there other improvements that are non-vehicular related, such as bike lanes, other things? And then specifically looking at, yes, we know we've got this TOD coming, but there's also been the cricket, the cricket matches, and, and those event-specific, event-driven, and, and what's the best way to deal with that? So to answer your question, I think Church Street was studied between 2015 and 2019, when the current CTP was adopted, transportation plan, but beyond that, I'm not aware that it has been studied since then, or with some of the changes. And 2019 doesn't, isn't that long ago, but in Morrisville, of course, the changes are nonstop. So, yeah.
Yeah, I, okay. I, I just want to, yeah, I just wanted to be clear on that, because I feel like we, the last time we talked about transportation, when, like you said, when the transportation plan was approved, you know, we weren't doing international cricket matches. I personally never, I didn't know that there was a plan for TOD, you know, so I, I'm just wondering if all this isn't a little bit premature? Because I'm looking at what you're showing here, that has a main street emptying out onto Church Street, right? And then everything else is interior roads. Like, I don't understand, I don't even actually understand how that's possible.
So within, if we're talking about specifically within the TOD district, those roads were designed as a part of this plan to, to handle the traffic, whether that be vehicular, bike lane, extra wide sidewalks, and those items.
But is this, so, but is this accurate, that you would expect there to be a single point of entry?
So this, it's hard to see. This one, it might not make it that much better. It has two on the main roads currently, and then it's got connections to the south to connect into future development. And eventually, that's where Airport Boulevard is, is planned to continue. I, I think this plan is a visionary guide. It was designed by Hazel Levine with some, some realistic intent, but, you know, I, I think the TOD is going to develop over a number of years through phases. It won't just be one, one, you know, plot down here on the map. Similar to the way McCrimmon Parkway, the extension, really designed, developed a little differently than the land use plan called for. And a lot of that is just due to, you know, unforeseeable market, that's right. So, but the TOD, this was visionary document. We do think it'll develop slightly different, but generally, we'd like to, you know, develop it the way it's shown.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Scruggins-Johnson, please.
Thank you for the update. I just wanted to share that I am also concerned about the Church Street, you know, it's been long stated by the state that Church Street is designed to be a two-lane road and not a four-lane road, even though everyone in the town is at one point in time said, "Why isn't this a four-lane road?" There are many reasons why. However, our use of Church Street has changed. Some of the purpose has changed. Our plan that we're sharing tonight has changed the way that we're thinking and using Church Street. So I think it, it's good to kind of reflect on that a little bit longer, and have that plan and the transportation figured out at the same time. Otherwise, we are going to experience a lot more mobility issues, which we do not want, which could also lead to congestion, which could affect quality of life. And there will be more development, but let's just make sure that we can do the best we can with the transportation. And I like the, you know, possibility of another study or something, just to look at that intensity, and then we can move that forward. So thank you.
And let me, sorry, let me, let me remind council of one additional thing I might not have said at the very beginning, was in, after the land use plan was adopted, the initial land use plan implementation took place, and, and some of that was to rezone the McCrimmon corridor from industrial away from it. But another piece of that was to rezone the, the parcel identified as TOD, to go ahead and zone them as TOD. So they are currently zoned transit-oriented district, development district. And again, that, to, just as the industrial McCrimmon was zoned away from, the TOD also had quite a significant amount of industrial area, and, and so that area was also preemptively zoned away from industrial and other districts to the TOD. So the zoning currently today is, is TOD on these parcels. And I just want to make that clear as, as we, you know, continue this conversation.
Thank you. I'll speak, and then anyone else who wants their first look at it. I would very much support, as in the resolution, the town should evaluate widening and other improvements to Church Street with future comprehensive transportation plan update. And sooner rather than later, I'm very interested in knowing what we can do. One thing that hasn't been mentioned is the flyover, and how that will actually affect that intersection already. But I think I'm interested in knowing, that's going to be built, we don't want to slow that down, but I'd be interested a little bit north of that and south of that, south of McCrimmon. So I would love your staff to be able to bring something back to this body as soon as possible, what resources it would take to evaluate in a meaningful way, to see if it would be appropriate to try to change the CTP for this area, given the growth that we're planning to have here. So that's what I wanted to say about that. Would anyone else like to speak who hasn't spoken this first time? Recognize Mayor Pretten Johnson.
So, thank you, Chris, for all this information and going over. This is really important. So to make sure we're kind of getting it right, I, I realize what we have in front of us is just a policy document. It's not actually allowing for any kind of development. It's that rezoning, which you said would come sometime in 2024. So that, that, my question then is, what, you know, and thank you for putting the, the item in the resolution about widening and other improvements to Church Street, and should be evaluated in a future comprehensive transportation plan. But when are those two things, I guess that's the rub here. When are those two things going to happen? And how they happen is critically important to, to many of, all of us.
Yeah, that's, that's an excellent question. And I, I'd like to clarify, somebody said is, the, the zoning is currently on these properties. They are currently zoned TOD, and they're based on standards that were developed when the UDO was adopted in 2013, I think long before anybody thought there was a TOD that was going, could have been built. This plan is taking that zoning and establishing the town's current desired vision for a TOD district, so that staff can, can change those, that text in the UDO to what those standards could be. So, so the reason I point that out is that the zoning is currently TOD, and, and the plan was submitted today, and that, that zoning, it, it could go forward. It just wouldn't match, it would match, you know, standards from, from 10-plus years ago. To, to answer your question, kind of, when, when is it going to happen? Was, and it, it's always a chicken or a egg here. And I just passed five years in Morrisville, and it's just been a nonstop five years, but it's been great. So thank you for having me.
You look really happy about that.
No, it's good.
Eric had asked me to speak into this microphone if I come up here, so.
Michelle Stiegel, Planning Director. I, I think we've heard you, we've heard the community about Church Street. We agree that it's an important issue to look into. Studying that road, as Planning Manager Lawson said, is something that should really be done by a traffic expert, traffic consultant. Doing that will take several months. So I know you have the plan ahead of you now. I just don't want council under the impression that in two weeks or four weeks, we're going to be able to come back to you with a plan that's thoughtful and truly evaluates what needs to be evaluated to make a recommendation for that road. What we could come back to with is kind of a timeline of how to build that in the process, and kind of when that study could potentially start and finish, and what would be incorporated in it. So we could come back to you with that kind of plan of approach, but coming up with recommendations for the road, and really doing that in a thoughtful way, building in the numbers from the draft plan, to use as some of those assumptions in a traffic analysis, that will take several months.
Okay. Thank you for that. That is helpful, and that might help us all a little bit to understand that timeline. And I don't know where we'll land after that, but I think a timeline would be really helpful. But let's go back to the rezoning. So I want to make sure that I'm clear, because maybe I'm, I'm, I may be a little confused. So this property was industrial at one time, and council rezoned it to a TOD zoning. So it has that kind of zoning right now. Tell me what could be built today? And I'm, I'm, it's going to be better than what it would have been if, if it was industrial. It could have been a cement plant. It could have been a trucking facility. It could have been some really horrendous things. So remind us what would, what could be built there today, if we don't move forward on what we're talking about, this item?
Sure. So the TOD standards of today were designed back in 2010, 2011, 2012, based off the '09 land use plan. So if we think about Morrisville as the '09 land use plan was being designed, very different place from 2005, 2009 than it is today. So what that called for was what was considered to be a mixed-use kind of district at that time. And when I say mixed-use, in this plan, we, the town would kind of, would require vertically mixed-use. Back in, you know, the late 2000s, it was a mix of uses, spread out. We had some townhomes over here, we have some commercial over here. So I would say generally, the themes are similar, but there's not the specific cross-sections with the bike lanes. There's not quite the vertical mix of uses. And I don't know if I'm really doing it justice, if I just say that it, if you think about developing 2005 compared to 2023, that's the difference. I don't know if that really answers the question, if you understand, but essentially, there's, it's, all right, here, here's the answer. It's, it's much more bare bones, I would say, rather than, than meeting any kind of the, the vision that Hazel Levine conducted during these work sessions. It's, it's just much more, I guess that's the best way to describe it.
Okay. It doesn't have the detail that this plan has, that we all were, we inputted to what, what we wanted to see here for the community, for the whole community. Okay, so then, okay, thank you for that. And just one more. So when you talk about coming back next year for rezoning, what are we going to rezone it to then, if it's already TOD?
Sure. So it wouldn't, the, the formal process would not be a rezoning. It would be a series of UDO text amendments.
Okay.
So instead of changing anything on the map, the development and design standards would be significantly changed.
Got it. Okay, yeah. And then that's where the, kind of, the rubber meets the road. That's where the detail is. That's what's really important. Yeah, okay. And it would be more detailed than what we're looking at now in front of us, which is just kind of a vision concept, kind of...
Yep. You would have before you, just the way the tree regulations came up, specific lines of text, graphics, images. It's supposed to be a form-based or form-heavy code, so it should have a lot of images, a lot of pictures of what, what's supposed to be built there. But yeah, it, it would be a pretty significant series of text amendments that will be back before you.
Okay, thank you. Because, okay, that, that's really helpful, and that's important, because that's helps us getting even more detailed into what we wish to see there versus what could potentially be there today without all of this work.
That's correct.
So, okay. And then, I'm sorry, and going back to Michelle's comments, I do like the idea of having, spelling out kind of this plan for us and the timeframe, so that maybe that'll be helpful to give some folks, and myself, a better comfort level. So, thank you.
Okay. We have a couple more things. I'd ask, we also have a public hearing that remains open. If we want, we can recognize you, Councilmember Garamella. If you want to wait a second, we'll do the public hearing, continue that, and then, or do you want to finish a thought that was just brought up? Okay. So at this time- So at this time, I'd like to recognize the town clerk, to recognize anyone here in the room who wants to speak on this subject for public hearing. We have some signups. Once again, you will have three minutes on this item. Please keep in mind that you get to speak at a public hearing on an item one time. So go ahead and share your thoughts. If you want to share anything else with us after this, it would be via email, generally to towncouncil@townmorrisville.org. You can also include town clerk, townmorrisville.org. So that's generally our policy, just so everyone knows. If you want to recognize those people signed up?
And we did receive one comment related to the public hearing via email.
Okay, why don't we do the people in the room first and then we'll do that after, please, sir?
Yes, sir. There were no individuals sign up to give public hearing comment, but I do believe we have an individual that did want to provide that.
Okay. Sir, if you'd like to approach the microphone, your name and your address for the record, And anyone else who wants to speak on this subject, please go ahead and get along the wall and we'll recognize you after him. So yes, the tall microphone, please, sir. And you'll have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Subha Reddy, 113 Alm Heaven Way. This is a letter to Mayor and Morrisville Town Council and staff. I'd like to thank you for extending the public hearing on TOD and zoning plan as we discussed last time, last time. And when I've been volunteering and connecting in the community, I have been, received a couple of requests that Morrisville neighbors and families requested that to reconsider and to recall this TOD zoning plan because it is going to contribute huge traffic congestion, which we already facing that. Without solving this problem, we are putting this again, the vision, because the vision plan clearly shows that this is the guidelines and the vision and zoning plan for the town council. But it doesn't say that how to solve the current traffic congestion issue. And also they have mentioned, and we all as a families also has a concern that this is going to put 10,000 more families, right? Last time, as I heard is each lot will will add the 2,000 and it is going to contribute 10,000. And so that is obviously it is going to, as per my understanding, it is going to contribute again, the school, school capacity issues. We haven't addressed current school capacity issues. There are schools, when I've been talking to my friends and neighbors, a couple of the schools are running with the substitute teachers because of the overcapacity or the lack of the skills, teachers are moving out from here. And by, as per this TOD zoning plan, it is also contributing that we already have that high burning issue that it's going to reduce the tree and green, green space. How do we address that? It doesn't have the solution because Morrisville is already in the red zone area that is a lot of green has been already destroyed, or I would say rather, because of the development. It's not the strategic development. So and also it's been mentioned that, why can't we consider this land for just affordable affordable housing for the teachers, which will reduce the putting the 10,000 families? Instead of that, just put the minimum families there. Or can't we acquire the land for the, by the town and use for the town hall construction? We just saw that we cannot even accommodate the number of residents here to sit, like a town, a town of Kerry has the multi-stair town hall, can be, can't we acquire those 28 acres that we see in the Church Street Park and construct the new town hall? This is, this can be addressed, one of the solution. I don't want to address the solution here, I'm not the engineer. So this is as just like a resident. And please do not approve this as it is. Recall this and ask for the Plan B. Do we have the Plan B? We just see the only plan. Thank you again for giving me opportunity. I would like to see your response because I also have emailed, sent this email, this letter. I will also hand over this letter here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And if the town clerk could go ahead and maybe wrap the desk in front of the speaker when it hits zero, so people will know that's happened, I'd appreciate it. Okay. Your name and address again for the record, please.
Susan Nguyen, 1216 Forest Willow Lane. I really appreciate all of you and your attention to the congestion at Church Street. I didn't expect it. I'm very surprised, I'm very pleased. If it get expanded, it'll be very welcome for me personally because I get stuck in that traffic. But I feel it'll be inadequate because much of the traffic is caused by people on McCrimmon trying to get on the highway. You expand, you expand Church Street, people are still going to be on McCrimmon, just line, 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 trying to, trying to get on the highway. That part isn't going to be solved if you expand Church Street. So when you do your traffic study, if you do it, please include that section of McCrimmon also. I appreciate you listening. Thank you so much and have a good night.
Thank you. Your name and address for the record, please, sir?
Bhaskar Roy, 1120 Forest Willow Lane. And first of all, I would like to say thank you and this plan, honestly, I did not know about this plan. When I, when I, when I looked at it, I see like the growth and everything, that that is much appreciated. But you, I mean, as the experts have said that we need traffic, I mean, somebody from traffic to come and study it for months and then look at it. All I say, just put somebody at 4:00 PM on either Church Street or on 54 and you will understand how bad it is right now, forget about the future. So it definitely needs to be improved. And even in this plan, I do not see proper exits from the highway into the Church Street. So the congestion will always be on McCrimmon and Church Street. That is not, I don't see that being resolved by this. We live in this area called RTP. So the traffic is coming from Research Triangle Park, not from Raleigh. I'm not saying not coming, I mean that there is more traffic coming from Research Triangle Park, not so much from Raleigh. So if everybody is coming from Raleigh, either they are coming through Davis Drive or they are coming through 54. So that part I don't see getting resolved because who is going around? And I mean, that does happen when Morrisville, for whatever reason, has to close the railway line in one, one point and there is a choking and that's when people start going around and come behind the post office and this and that they're trying to find. For Church Street, there is literally just one exit in Morrisville, which takes us across, which is the McCrimmon one. There was one in the past, which was closed, that goes through, that used to go to Walmart, that is closed. On the other side is closed, unless there are more exit points that come out. I know Barbie Road and all that. And I also understand that's not an in-town council, I mean, in your hands, that that needs negotiations with the railway line and everything, but that needs to be pushed if we want to like de-stress anything on Church Street on this side. Thank you. Thank you for taking this time.
Thank you. Sir, anyone else in the room who want to speak for three minutes on the subject? Okay, seeing none. If the town clerk could summarize or read in its entirety if it's appropriate, the emailed comment?
Thank you, Mayor Colley. We did receive one comment via email and reads as follows. Hello, Town Council. Hello, Town Council. Today you have heard from some concerned residents during the public comment, asking for your help in responding to the Wake County Public School System student enrollment plan for the 2024 school year. About this same time you are hearing this, hundreds of parents from neighborhoods along Church Street north of McCrimmon are attending a virtual session with Wake County Public School System representatives. In brief, the first draft assigned students away from Austin Ridge Elementary, away from Austin Ridge Elementary for Kids Creek families and away from Parkside Elementary for Providence Place and all other families. This will be a significant, this will be a significant disruption and all families are opposed to it. A response from the District 7 Board of Education seat, Mr. Hagerty cited the growth in our area is a problem for them. Here is a quote from his response. Residential growth in these assignment areas continue to grow, even when these schools were capped and builders and realtors knew that new students would have to go to overflow schools further away. New developments were approved even though the capacity limits of these schools and their enrollment caps were known. So for TOD West and TOD South, here are the questions you need to consider before approving the rezoning of these areas. What feedback have you gotten from Wake County Public Schools on these developments? How many students are calculated from these proposed 4,000 units? What school will students from these developments be assigned to? What has the Public Education Advisory Committee informed you about this development and have you asked them? You must understand that students from high density apartments tend to be transient, which means they do not stay at the school for long and that turnover is a massive problem for a school. As an example, 60% of Austin Ridge Elementary students come from high density and represent 25% turnover. Because of this issue, that school is capped. I encourage the town council and planning folks to investigate this topic. I am deeply concerned that in this intoxicated desire for a train station and affordable housing, many issues are not considered or addressed. In the next week, digest how upset hundreds of families are and let that guide your decisions. Or better yet, have a conversation with some of them. Thank you and best regards, Mark Dixon.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, everyone who chose to do comments before the public hearing, so I'll go ahead and start recognizing the second round. Councilmember Garamella.
This is more for Giselle. Do you want to go and explain what the improvement, McCrimmon improvements are? Because that is the key part where people have some misunderstanding on it.
So can I, can I add on to that? I was going to ask Chris, there's a slide in the presentation that that shows at least the McCrimmon flyover. Everybody's leaving, so maybe it doesn't.
No, it's good to have this on the record for the recording.
I agree. I was going to ask Chris to bring, that is the only slide we have that relates to the work that's being, will be done on McCrimmon to widen it. Thank you, sorry, thank you.
So, I don't know, anyone can explain this. I'm going to say this is the key for all the development that is going on, the road development.
Yeah, sure, I can take a crack at it. Essentially, McCrimmon Parkway from Davis Drive to Chapel Hill Road. So McCrimmon Parkway from Davis Drive to Chapel Hill Road is going to be all four-laned and a flyover is going to extend over the railroad tracks. And that is, that is seen here in the bottom of the slide, you can see my mouse, the red is shows the grade separation where the the bridge will be. And then along Chapel Hill Road from Perimeter Park Drive north to 540 and a little beyond, all of that section will be at least four-lane, multiple lane, travel lanes in each direction, improved intersections, turning. So so this area is going to have significant road improvements and widening and currently projects are projected to start in late 2024. So, you know, it'll include, what is, Church Street, it'll include intersection improvements to Church Street and and McCrimmon, that intersection also.
And Chris, does it include the Davis Drive too?
I believe it does include the Davis Drive, McCrimmon intersection, yeah.
That's the seven, seven-lane road that they showed when they gave a presentation for that, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. I think this is, this is important and people are talking about the concerns. I think great strides have been done. I know for COVID, some of the timelines have been pushed back, but this is a much anticipated project that would help elevate a lot of traffic issues, especially on Davis and McCrimmon, Church Street and McCrimmon, and then have a free, like flyover that other train, other rail tracks will not, you know, stop. I think the flow would be much, much better. But I wanted to circle back on Liz's question about the TOD. The current TOD, as you rightly said, it is already zoned TOD, but the specifications that we are putting into the plan are the UDO text amendment. It's pretty much like what we did at downtown, right? Like when we added all those, you know, text amendments to make sure that downtown is a project that we could do. So I'm expecting the same standards and those kind of things, get into the UDO language and all that.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So so I just wanted to be also sure, as of today, will they be allowed to put five to seven stories or five to nine stories?
I don't remember the exact height requirements, but it, they're taller than average. So I, I would be safe to say five to seven stories, if not taller today, yes.
Okay. And so the standards, which they have to do is the the design standards, like we have been, what I'm trying to come up with, we have our road standards in the CTP, you know, certain roads have to be certain, you know, they have to be bike lanes and all those things will come into play, right? A material of we put it in the studio or not, because that's our, how our roads are and infrastructure is, that's we already approved. My question here is, in regards to the traffic improvement, you know, you asked like the entire Church Street, if, if, I don't know how much the traffic study can be done, but I was looking around the TOD corridor from McCrimmon to the Church Street Park, that corridor, you know, if that could be studied. I don't know how these guys do their TIA's, but that is something I would be very much interested to know. Because as everyone has already stated, the whole focus has changed, you know? It's 2019, it's four years ago and a lot of things have changed. And the fact that someone does a study, I'm sure it will have a different number now. And and I think for for me to talk with a straight face to the, to the community, I need the data to defend our stand that we talked on the podium, is it, yeah, go for it or not go for it? Because right now I don't have that to say anything about it. It's all hypothetical of 2019 data. So that's, that's what I would request you to, as Michelle said, go back, come up with a plan and help us so that we can move forward in the renovation.
Yeah, Claire, is your request before the vision is set, you'd like the the road to be studied? Or are you comfortable moving forward with the vision and and study it prior to zoning changes and other regulatory changes?
So my question is more technical, which chicken and egg kind of a thing, like, you know, you go for rezoning, the rezoning will use the current CTP standards, which calls for only a two-lane road. So how are you implementing the changes, which you are doing the study, incorporate into any of the requirements before the rezoning? That's, that's my rub here, like which one goes first and the second? Because you're taking a standard, current standard, which is using 2019 data and trying to do a rezoning. But for me, that's technically not right. It's four years old data.
Okay. Yeah, I, you'll probably question that TOD currently will allow buildings up to 75 feet in height, so.
Seventy-five is only for four-story, less than four.
Probably, probably a little taller than four if it hit its max.
Yeah, fine.
If I may, I mean, it sounds like Councilmember Garamella is echoing the request to have a timeline and a plan to understand. And you also mentioned that the rezoning portion and the UDO changes is kind of into next year. So I'm, I'm optimistic that we might be able to at least have that timeline and plan before then and then we could revisit this whole thing. But at this time, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Body, followed by Mayor Pretend Johnson.
Yeah, further to Councilmember Garamella's point of proceeding with facts, can you, the number 10,000 new families was mentioned tonight in public comments. Can you, can you speak to the number of new families that would, I don't remember being that high, that's all I'm asking?
No, I don't, I don't think it was quite that high. I think, I think the total units projected were closer to like 2,000 per section if it was built out to its max height and density.
And we have, and we would have no way of knowing yet whether those would be apartments suitable for families with children or, you know, I remember you saying at one point that it would, it would probably be one-bedroom apartments mostly, but I, you know, I misremembered that. We talk about a lot of projects.
I don't, I don't remember saying necessarily something like that in the last meeting, but I'll say based on kind of just experience, looking at plans over and over throughout the year, the majority of apartments are one-bedroom buildings. Overall, the proportion for two and three bedroom, especially when you get to three-bedroom, very small compared to the overall number of apartments. I would expect if these buildings, or if the I would expect if these buildings, or if this site was developed in that similar pattern, the three-bedroom is gonna be much less, there's gonna be plenty of single-family, or, single-unit apartments, not nearly as much, there's a small percentage of three-bedroom, if it, if it equates to other developments around town.
Okay, I just wanna be sure that we're all working with the same set of numbers. I heard the, I thought I heard in public comments, someone said that there would be 10,000 new families, but I, I don't, I didn't think it was that high, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor Potem Johnson, followed by Councilmember Rao.
So, and also to follow up on that, that's why it's important to, these, these projects that we talk about occur, conversations occur over multiple meetings, over multiple months, and unfortunately, or fortunately, because we'd be here till 2:00 in the morning, we don't repeat everything at every meeting. So when somebody comes into a process in the middle or the end, they miss all the conversation that took place to this point. And again, we don't repeat everything because we've already done that work, and here we are. So, so I, I feel bad that the residents left the room, because we're adding additional information that we've already, already talked about, that would be helpful to, to get the more knowledgeable of what, the work that we're doing. But just to follow on a little bit to Councilmember Boddy, we also have talked about the fact that there will be affordable housing in this area as well. So we, and that makes sense, because this is gonna be a transit-oriented development, where transit of some fashion will be incorporated, whether it's the bus rapid transit today and commuter or passenger rail, whatever we're gonna call it in the future, that's gonna be, or is, it's not going to be, it is a part of this plan. So, anyhow, I just wanted to say that, but what I really wanted, when, when you all come back with a plan, maybe it would help us to talk a little bit, a little bit more about the TIA, and what we would see and expect from that? Because whatever development occurs, whether it's on this parcel or any other parcel in town, when they do the TIA, regardless of, you know, what data we have from the past, when they do a current TIA, based on whatever the development numbers are, there will be transportation improvements that will need to occur, and will need to be paid by the developer before any dirt is turned. So maybe, let's talk about that again, and, and what we can expect from, especially TOD West. You know, what, what, when we do a TIA, what would be affected? It's a significant portion of Church Street, this property goes, goes back up Church Street a bit, so maybe we can kind of revisit that a little bit, so we're all, we're all clear on, obviously, we're not gonna know what would come out of that TIA, because we don't even know what anybody wants to build on this property just yet. We know we have a vision, but whether that, you know, how much or whatever, that's still to come. So, I don't, I don't know, that, that's something you can just give us a refresh on, because it's been a while, I think, since we've actually seen a TIA on a project, quite frankly. I can't remember, as I was sitting here, I'm trying to remember the last one, and it's been quite a while, so. What's that? Well, I can remember a couple of TIA's, but, yeah, but anyhow, it's been a while since this council, I think, has actually seen one, and what comes out of that. And, and so I'm gonna repeat again, that that is on the developer then, to do that, to do that work and those road improvements. And honestly, you know, if we, maybe I shouldn't say this publicly, but to rely on the State Department of Transportation, and Church Street is their road, is very difficult these days. We see this, even with the McCrimmon project that is being delayed, we see this with the Aviation Parkway project that is being delayed. And so to wait for them to, to cough up that money, I, I have more faith in, in somebody who would come in and develop the property, and they have the money to do the, because we will, we will force them to do the work, and then it'll, it'll get done, I think, a whole lot quicker, the road improvements would get done a whole lot quicker than waiting for DOT to come in and widen a Church Street or a McCrimmon, so, just my two cents on that. Nothing to respond to, that's okay.
Councilmember Rao, please.
I, I agree with Councilmember Garamella's logic, that if the data is old, we should get the current data when we're making decisions. I mean, I think that's what he's saying, what I understand him saying is that if we accept the plan as is, and it's based on data that isn't up-to-date with the kind of traffic we're having on Church Street, then it's not being fair to us, because then we're not asking developers to pay what they need to pay to get, you know, maximize the investment. So I would agree, based on that, of a timeline that we would have on the Church Street, you know, area for that, for that plan. I think one thing that also would be helpful is, and maybe this knowledge out there, just for the public to know, the cost of these road improvements, you know? What is the cost, so that people, the public knows that, you know, a stretch of 54 near the tracks was like $50 million? So this isn't like, you know, small change money to do road widening. Now, we have, in the town, had real, real success when we've led on transportation projects on our own, either through bonds, they're approved by the voters, or through, like, Morrisville Carpet and Road Project, right? So that's always an option as well, is do we wanna start thinking as a council and staff of other road projects? Because as Mayor Potem said, she's absolutely right. I mean, we don't, we cannot depend on DOT to fund these roads. And I think sometimes the public doesn't understand that, like, working with development, we can actually get those dollars invested in, into the roads. So, you know, anyway, just a couple of thoughts on that.
I think everyone got a chance this round. Councilmember Boddy, did you have an additional thought?
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay, Mayor Potem Johnson?
I promise, I'll make this short, just one more comment about how development helps with the traffic congestion. The, one, there are many examples I could talk about here in town, but one of them is the widening of 54 that Park West Village had to do years ago. If we were waiting, and we are, we're working, we have asked repeatedly over decades for 54 to be widened, and that has never happened, and that section from Cary Parkway all the way up to Weston was widened by Park West Village, and that has been tremendous, that has been tremendous for our residents, that that section of 54 was widened. It was done because of development, so I, I just don't wanna lose that in this conversation, and depending on DOT is very difficult, and I, I don't mean to bash them, but they've got a state they have to, they have to deal with, and I understand that, but that doesn't make it any easier when I think that we have not gotten our fair share, or that our fair share that we were given keeps being pushed back. So anyhow, just to, the 54 widening is a great example of development helping, and that, that was done 12 years ago, I'm trying to remember, at least 12 years ago, and is still, you know, helping tremendously 12 years later, and is, is moving traffic much better than it would be without? Because if anybody remembers, that was a little two-lane road, like the rest of 54, and we all, we all crawled. So anyhow, that's it, I'm sorry, I said a bit short.
That was short, that was fine. The, so, on our agenda tonight is closing of the public hearing and voting on this item, and I wanna gauge the will of the council at this time. We heard some good public hearing input, I think it might be appropriate to leave that open for another two weeks, but I would entertain a motion at this time to close the public hearing. Do you have a comment before then, Councilmember Boddy?
I do, I just wanted to mention that since so many residents were, weren't able to come to the meeting tonight because of the, the meeting about the schools, I do think that it'd be, it would be good to leave the public hearing open, just to, I mean, I just wanna make sure we hear all the comments.
Okay, great. So, like I said, I'd entertain a motion, and I'm not hearing one, so that's fine.
Is it closed or to keep it open?
We, we don't need a motion to keep it open, it just stays open until we close it. So, sounds like we're gonna leave it open at this time, and I don't think we have the desire to go ahead and vote on this at this time, but I'd entertain a motion to adopt, if someone wants to make that motion. Okay? Not hearing that either, so if you can come back in two weeks with any kind of update you might have at that time, the public hearing will once again be open. Those who spoke at this public hearing on this subject, we'd really encourage you to share your thoughts with someone else and have them speak, if you have different points, but generally, you get one chance to speak at each public hearing, no matter how long it goes. And we always appreciate public hearing via email, you can do that as many times as you want, it's just speaking in person, you get that once. And I think staff has heard that we have a desire to, town staff should evaluate widening and other improvements on Church Street, and not do that right away, but essentially give us a plan and a timeline, so we have a better understanding of how that might fit in with the other items regarding this agenda. Does staff have what they need?
Yep.
Okay, wonderful, thank you all, really good discussion. At this time, I think it'd be time for a break, so we're gonna take a 15-minute break, and we'll come back for future meetings and events and things. So why don't we go ahead and come back together at 8:44, please? Go over some future meetings, events, and community engagement opportunities. There will be a retirement reception for Town Manager Martha Page Thursday, September 28th. The Morrisville community is invited to attend this retirement reception, honoring Morrisville Town Manager Martha Page on Thursday, September 28th, at Town Hall, 100 Town Hall Drive. The reception begins at 5:00 PM, a short program will start at 6:00 PM. Town Manager Page is retiring after serving 10 years as Morrisville's Town Manager. We look forward to honoring her on Thursday. Registration for Morrisville 101 is now open. Morrisville 101 is an annual community academy for Morrisville residents interested in local government. This is a free program for residents ages 16 and older. Program will begin on October 25th, and will be held from 6 till 8:30 PM, once a week, for five weeks. Registration ends on October 12th. For more information and to reserve your spot, visit the Morrisville 101 webpage. Get ready to tantalize your taste buds, because Morrisville Restaurant Week is almost here. From September 28th through October 8th, our town will transform into a culinary paradise, and you won't want to miss out. Whether you're a fan of savory or sweet, there's something for everyone, plus, it's the perfect opportunity to explore new flavors or revisit your all-time favorites. Check out participating restaurants and specialty menus at morrisvillrestaurantweek.com. Join the fun on social media by tagging your dining-out adventures with hashtag #MSV Restaurant Week. On Tuesday, October 10th, at 3:30 PM, there will be a ribbon cutting for the Dragonfly Disc Golf Course at the Healthy Food Hub on Town Hall Drive. And all Morrisville schoolchildren and members of youth organizations are invited to showcase their artistic talents by participating in the 18th Annual Morrisville Student Art Poster Contest. So, that was just a few years after you started, Mayor Potem Johnson. The Morrisville Environment and Stormwater Committee has selected a theme of Morrisville Roots for Trees, to encourage students to produce works of art that promote expanding the town's tree canopy. Visit our website and search for poster contest for more details and a list of prizes. The Western Wake Farmers Market offers healthy and fresh food and goods from small and local businesses from 8:00 AM to noon, every Saturday, at the Healthy Food Hub, right next to the Dragonfly Disc Golf Course that I mentioned earlier. For a full listing of events, please see the town calendar at www.morrisvillnc.gov. While there, sign up for our Next Week in Morrisville email, which comes out every Friday, and also download Morrisville Central on your Android or iPhone to have all this info at your fingertips. At this time, I'm gonna recognize councilmembers for comments, I'll begin with Councilmember Scott King-Sonson, followed by myself.
Thank you, Mayor, I don't have any further comments this evening.
Okay, that's gonna be myself, followed by Councilmember Boddy. I just want to say that I am supportive of our town's decision to cancel our international festival this past Saturday for the safety of all involved. I want to acknowledge and appreciate all the planning and actions by our staff, and the volunteers, and vendor support, which went into preparing for the festival, although this event did not take place. I am glad that we have so many more opportunities to gather as a community. As noted earlier, please encourage your friends and neighbors to sign up for our Next Week in Morrisville email, and download our app on their Androids or phones. As the weather cools, I look forward to the next few weeks, when even more of us will be out and about, living connected and living well. Councilmember Boddy now, followed by Councilmember Fender, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I did want to mention one thing about the current situation with the county public schools that I haven't seen, uh, discussed tonight. One of the problems, I spoke to Chris Hader about this on Friday, and then, and then again on, on Monday. One of the problems with, specifically with the elementary schools, is the unfunded K-3 mandate from the North Carolina General Assembly. This is creating havoc among Wake County public schools. The mandate is unfunded, so that while class sizes are required to get smaller, there's no money to build new schools. So, one thing, and I am absolutely sympathetic to everyone's issues with the, with the school assignment changes. I understand that, I've been through, I have five children, I have absolutely been there. But if you're not also writing your, to your representative in the North Carolina General Assembly, you're not doing everything that you could to get that, to get the school situation under control in Wake County. It's, it's just that I haven't seen that brought up, so I just wanted to throw that into the hopper. Thank you, that's it.
Councilmember Fender, followed by Councilmember Rao, please.
To build off of what Councilmember Boddy was just speaking to, in addition to, you know, addressing the, the school crowded issue by contacting your state representatives, there's other things our residents can do as well. I mean, one of those is when, is that when a rezoning request comes before Morrisville, that will increase residential units, whether it be townhomes or apartments, we need to hear more from the public of their opposition. You know, a lot of the development we've had recently are, is by right, it's occurring along McCrimmon Extension, which we have zoned for apartments. But like, the one development I can think of offhand that will, I don't know when it's on the calendar, but will be coming up before the council for rezoning soon, is parcels of land along Church Street, near the, what is it, the Iron Works Facility, four additional townhomes, and duplexes, and possibly single-family detached houses that are for rent. That will require a rezoning approval by the council, so that is one opportunity where the council will have control to not approve that zoning. So, but when those items come before the council, it would be really nice to have the pub, to hear the public's voice, not only right now, but also during those rezoning requests, because the last two requests we had for rezoning were, ended up being approved. So there are other things that the residents can do. And then also realize, if you are upset about the school overcrowdedness and your children being reassigned, you also need to be, consider when we have a property tax increase in Wake County, that, to be in, to be in favor of that, that is where Wake County gets its funds to build schools. The town of Morrisville doesn't build schools, Wake County does. I guess, because I do know of some people, not everyone, but I guess, because I do know of some people, not everyone, but get upset about schools being overcrowded and their kids being reassigned, but then oppose property tax increases. So, the two things are correlated, and you need to consider all the interdependencies. So, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Rao, followed by Mayor Pretam Johnson.
Yeah, just to piggyback off of that, I mean, I think that Councilmember Robati's point about the class size, I mean, I definitely think it's a problem. And imagine if you had a class that could have 30, and because of the class limits, you can only have 16, and they're not giving us more money. This is adding to the problem, in addition to getting more public input. So hopefully we can do that. Congratulations on Fire Station 3. It was a really great moment for our town. I want to thank the Morrisville Chamber for the Small Business Forum. I attended along with Councilmember Robati. It was very well attended. I really want to thank Sarah Ellis and Julia Walker for their presentation for the town. They were great, and all the other presenters. It was really wonderful. I did want to just make one comment about Anthony Blackman, who passed away last week. He was a community leader, Order of the Longleaf Pine winner. He was very involved with the Morrisville Chamber, head of Atlanta Tire, and also spearheaded the pro tennis tournament in Cary and the Atlanta Tire Tennis Championships. The tennis court will be named after him, the Anthony Blackman Court, but he was just such a great leader, and I just want to pray for him and his family. And he really loved Morrisville a lot, so want to just pray for his family. And finally, I want to thank Congressman Wiley Nickel for hosting a panel this week with leaders of the Asian American community and the United States Trade Ambassador Catherine Tai. And it was an engaging conversation on, you know, what we can do to leverage federal money to help Asian businesses and leaders grow stronger. So, looking forward to a good rest of the meeting and last few hours with Martha, so the countdown begins.
Mayor Pretam Johnson, followed by Councilmember Garamella.
Now, I too want to just say congratulations and thank you to the Fire Department on the opening of their new fire station. That station is absolutely beautiful, and I'm thrilled and so proud of the Fire Department. And I also want to just let the public know, I've not responded to everyone who sent emails about the school issue that we're facing now, and I thank everyone for their input. And like Councilmember Robati said, we advocate, but we're not the decision-makers when it comes to schools. So there are many pieces to this puzzle, and she spoke about the fact that the General Assembly even is a piece of this puzzle. So I just want to make sure folks know that, and I think they are, also communicating with their school board, with the school board members, and especially our school board representative, Chris Haggerty, and I do think they are. But anyone else that may be listening, you need to make sure that you're doing that. And I absolutely agree with sending email to the General Assembly or our representatives at the General Assembly. Unfortunately, I think our representatives understand what the class size limit means, and they understand the magnitude. Unfortunately, that's not the whole General Assembly, but anyhow, that's all I have to say tonight.
Councilmember Garamella, please.
No, I think all have been said, so I don't want to repeat. But I do certainly feel, every time we have this redistricting of the schools, we have always sent a letter from the town asking them to reconsider. And I think it would be good if the will of the council is, we do the same thing, because it does affect a set of the people. And obviously, the school system has well thought about it, but at least we have to convey from our side, the voices to be heard, to be passed on to them. So I just wanted to ask if you guys are interested, that we have traditionally did that for all reassignments in the past.
So I'll let Mayor Pretam weigh in, then I'll like to weigh in on that.
Yeah. So, you're right, we have done that in the past. I think before, I would feel comfortable doing that. I've not talked to School Board Representative Haggerty yet. I really would like to talk to him first before we agree to anything.
Absolutely.
And find out from him what he thinks is the most effective way to move forward. So I would just ask a little bit of time on that. I don't know, I don't know when they're voting on the...
It's pretty soon, that's the thing, like, you know, time is of an essence. I don't know, Martha. No more? Listening sessions?
Yeah, they've got several listening sessions, because it's across the county, and then a public hearing and a work session, I think. I can verify, but it's at least later in October.
No doubt. I would advocate, you know, behalf of this idea of stability in proximate schools, but let's find out, I don't want to, I want to make sure we're effective in what we do and what actions we take, and that we're not being ineffective.
No, I totally agree. I think, obviously, we will consult with him, but the concept of a letter in a way that it is not, you know, counteroffensive, and it's only adding to value for the reconsideration would be really good for our town council.
So to that end, Town Manager Page drafted a really nice letter with lots of information, including the fact that our MPAC committee is meeting early October. So I'd be interested in having their thoughts on what they're hearing, and they're probably going to be hearing from a lot of our residents in there, like we did tonight. Also, would this council be interested in asking staff to provide to us like a timeline of what it looks like? They call this Draft 1. Is there expected to be like three drafts? Kind of firm up when the last time that we're going to be able to give input is, so we understand what we're working back from? Is that something this council would be interested in, asking staff to let us know so we all know the timeline that they're working under?
Yeah, but absolutely. But my only concern is, usually after Draft 2, they don't change a whole lot. Draft 1 is just to check it out, and then after Draft 2, it's pretty much set in stone from the previous experiences. So time is of an essence before we get into the Draft 2.
So it's pretty much now. Are we asking for a briefing item on our next meeting to include a draft letter for consideration?
So I would really like to...
Yeah, we can certainly talk to them, but at least a draft letter ready. To send or not is later, so we don't have to wait one more cycle for that letter to be ready.
Yeah, I would not want to put this on an agenda tonight. I would not want to direct staff to make this an agenda item. Let's do our homework first.
Yes. What I would request is, let Martha or, you know, Brandon, like, you know, draft a letter so that they can send it to us and look at it, and then we can, anyway, we'll be talking to Chris, each one of us, and then however we need to wordsmith it can be done, so that we don't need to come and take a vote to send that letter. You know, we can just put it under, if everyone is okay, consent agenda and push it out. Only if we find...
I think that sounds good, but I'd like to hear from staff, because I don't think we've really directed them what to include.
Let me give you an update on the timeline. So they have the virtual information sessions on Draft 1 beginning today and through October 5th. October 17th is when they plan to have the Draft 2 presented to the board and public. Sometime in October, there will be another virtual information session for Draft 2 to be determined. Their public hearing is scheduled for November 8th, and an anticipated plan to discuss and vote on the plan on November 21st.
So if Councilmember Garamella is right, once the Draft 2 occurs, and that's on the 17th, we have October 10th as the one meeting where we can sort of move that needle. So...
So, can I, I agree, but I think we can move that needle now. I think we, you know, I think we can reach out, each one of us, and talk to our school board representative, and so I'm not sure we need to wait to the October 10th to start moving a needle. I think we can, I've not had the opportunity to reach out to School Board Representative Haggerty yet, but I planned it.
There would be seven people going at Mr. Haggerty, so I'm not sure how to be most efficient with our time and his time.
So if I, if it's helpful, I spoke to Chair Haggerty, Vice Chair Haggerty, over the weekend to draft the email. I think he would appreciate talking to council members before they would receive drafts of letters.
Okay. So, if anyone needs contact info from Mr. Haggerty, please reach out to Town Manager Page, and she'll provide what she's able. Okay? Is that satisfactory for you for now, Councilmember Garamella? Okay? Thank you very much. Everyone's had their chance to comment. Town Manager Page, anything from staff this evening?
Just one, it got mentioned, so I'll go ahead and reiterate that council has two more joint meetings with advisory committees next week. The first one being October 3rd. I'm going to mess it up. One is with MPAC, and the other is with MESC, and I believe...
MPAC is the third.
Okay, so then MESC is on the fourth. They're back-to-back. I know Councilmember Fender's leading the MESC one. Is Councilmember Robati leading the MPAC one? Got it. Great.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. At this time, we are ready for our work session. There is one work session on this evening's agenda, economic development strategy update and discussion. Martha Page, Town Manager, will facilitate the discussion. Would you like us to stay up here, or should we join y'all down at the table?
No, I would like you to come down, please.
Okay. Let's head on down to the table. No break, we're just going right to the table, please. Bring your microphones. And your flip cards, so we can recognize people. Thank you.
Do you want us to...
I think you're...
All right? Hmm? You think I'm just...
I agree. I'm with Ann.
Okay. I'd like to recognize Town Manager Page to facilitate this discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to introduce Kathleen Henry in a minute, and also would like to mention that we have a number of members of the Morrisville Chamber of Commerce Executive Committee here. Veronica Bent, the current president, no, chair. Sean Kearns, who will be the chair following Veronica. Latrinda Riley, who is the treasurer. Emily, jack-of-all-trades, governmental affairs, and who's been our partner and collaborator on getting this to you. And then, of course, Rose Cornelius, our chamber president. So just a quick outline, and I'll preface my comments of, this is really the start of the next phase of your in-depth conversation. This is not a solution, have it all figured out kind of conversation. And just as you get to that discussion point, you have your Chamber of Commerce members here to interact, engage, answer questions, listen as well. We're going to just do a quick background refresh, the process we've used to do this. Kathleen is going to do the lion's share of this with the economic development strategy. It's been a pleasure to work with her, and you're going to see the quality of her work. We'll do some quick discussion and QA, and then talk about those next steps. So if we think back, we know that we've had economic development going on in the town for many, many years, and it's been handled by the Chamber since 1998. Our current economic development has been in existence since 2013. It was actually, I think, executed the meeting before I came as Town Manager. I think it's fair to say, oops, I'm not... The landscape has changed a lot. Accelerated growth in North Carolina and in the Research Triangle region, the new real estate developments in Morrisville. We really paid a lot more attention to this after the COVID pandemic hit us, in particular with focus on small businesses. We know that the Chamber of Commerce has had some staffing transitions, and I think it's fair to say increased workloads for both the town and the Chamber. The existing agreement is really focused on one primary function, which is capital investments and job creations from those economic project development proposals that we get. And they also do represent the town at meetings and conferences and events associated with economic development. They participate in associations. And primarily, when Sarah Gaskell was still here, we were getting quarterly reports on the activities of the Chamber in general and with economic development projects. Just for context, in 2013, when that agreement was executed, it was, there was a value of $40,000 placed on that. The current amount of that agreement, based on the factors that are in that agreement, have it at $51,000. So that's been a less than a 3% increase annualized for them over the life of that current agreement. Just for information, there is also a separate trade agreement we have with the Chamber that covers how we're members, the recognitions we get, the complimentary events we get, town recognition, and we provide them some services, they provide us some services for no money being exchanged. So our first foray into this was back at our retreat in January, where we did the in-depth discussion of all of the economic development components. We did, Emily coordinated a similar discussion with Chamber members that council had using that same survey document instrument to gather information. That's when I really went to Wake County Economic Development and sort of said, where do we go from here? And we actually have engaged Kathleen's services since March of 2023, and it's been a back-and-forth process since then to review what you see tonight. She's going to cover an economic development strategy that has some of those same focus areas that council talked about in January. We had a preliminary second session of executive committee feedback and input, and you have some of that in your packet just in August as we prepared this item to come to you. So now I'm going to introduce Kathleen. So Kathleen and I, we've chuckled about it, how we got to meet each other. It was on a, it was on a project proposal that didn't go well, and so there was a lot of investment and lots of texting while we were on a conference call behind the scenes trying to pull together perhaps a less-than-functional project proposal team. But Kathleen has worked for Wake County Economic Development. I'll let her talk a little bit about what she did there, but she has, she has expertise and interest in strategy and the big picture versus the day-to-day implementation. I think that's what we talked about. So, good for us, is all I can say. So I'm going to turn it over, unless anyone has any questions for me just yet, I'm going to turn it over to Kathleen. Kathleen...
five years at Wake County Economic Development, and it's a really special place, so I appreciated being able to dig a little bit deeper. I do want to say thank you to Martha for really steerheading this effort and really trying to create a clear and strategic path forward as it relates to economic development. I know we're all going to miss her. There's a big gap in the economic development community because of your retirement, but it's well-deserved. Also, wanted to say thank you to Emily Ziegler and the whole Morrisville Chamber and Board for their involvement in this process as well. It's been very collaborative, which is certainly representative of your town and community. So before I dive into the actual strategy, I do want to tell you a little bit about who's putting together this strategy. So I have 10 years of experience in economic development and international business, five of which were in Savannah, Georgia. I worked for the World Trade Center, which was the international arm of the Savannah Economic Development Authority. I focused on research and analysis and trade development, so I was helping companies expand into international markets via products and services and facility locations. More recently, I spent almost five years as the Economic Development Director at Wake County Economic Development. Most of you likely know all the great things that that organization does, but they do cover all 12 municipalities in Research Triangle Park. My primary role was business recruitment, but I also led our organization's international business strategy, of which Morrisville played a strong part in that as well. I have worked with Morrisville Economic Development over its multiple iterations. So I got to work very closely with Sarah Gaskell when she was here for business recruitment, existing industry support, as well as our international business strategy. I also worked with Linda for a couple of years, which was mainly focused on business recruitment. Just wanted to add that context so that you can see there's both knowledge and experience that I have in the economic development realm in general, but also have a bit of a unique perspective, having seen the evolution of Morrisville over the past couple of years. Okay, so let's jump into the strategy. As Martha explained, she and I have had many conversations about the history of Morrisville Economic Development, kind of where you're at now, the current state, the changing economic landscape, and really had several areas that rose to the surface in terms of what we wanted this strategy to be for Morrisville and what we wanted it to accomplish. So Morrisville, as you know, super-strong, diverse and dynamic community, centrally-located, historically known for a really strong and educated workforce, a diverse culture, strong economic ecosystem. Also, from a lot of the research I did and what I experienced, also clearly a community that residents are very proud to be a part of and who also play a very active role in the community, which I think is incredible. So because of this, we kind of outlined what exactly we want this strategy to accomplish. So enhancing the community's existing assets, maintaining the focus on smart and intentional growth as you've done historically. In addition, although Morrisville is an advanced community with strong assets, you've experienced significant changes and also had competing priorities naturally during the pandemic that shifted the focus a little bit away from traditional economic development practices and programs. So we wanted this also to inform future programs of work and strategic investments. I will also say, keep in mind, this is a strategy that should be set for the next three to five years. There's a lot included in the email that you got. There's a lot included in this strategy that I won't get into tonight, but it is meant to be setting the foundation for the long run. Lastly, again, creating a foundation and foundational elements that can withstand organizational changes, economic disruptions, ensuring that a focus on economic development in the future. So jumping into the focus areas and kind of how we went about evaluating this strategy. So you see listed here three key pillars that rose to the surface throughout the evaluation of this strategy. Within each of those and throughout this whole strategy are nine focus areas that we have identified. These areas that you see were chosen based off of feedback from you in January, conversations with Martha, conversations with the Morrisville Chamber, and also just what I believe should be included in this comprehensive analysis. So I did look into each of these areas with two different perspectives, one of which being, you know, the work that I've done in Morrisville and in Wake County, but also taking that hat off and reviewing as an outsider looking in. So asking questions, doing research, understanding frameworks that already exist in these areas, what's being done successfully, and identifying some gaps and strategies for implementation. So these next couple of slides, I'm going to go through the major goals that we identified for those three key pillars. Again, I want to stress, this is, I'm trying to be as high-level as possible. There's a lot more included in the document that you've received, but for the purpose of this evening. So the first pillar that we identified was economic prosperity and smart growth. Within this pillar, I reviewed business recruitment, business retention and expansion, industry cluster cultivation, and commercial real estate, commercial and industrial real estate. So the goal within this pillar is to promote economic prosperity and smart growth for Morrisville by creating jobs, increasing capital investment, and maintaining a diversified industry base. So what does that actually look like for Morrisville? This means a focus on strategic recruitment of new businesses. You have millions of square feet of life science space that is online recently and coming online in 2024. This is incredible for Morrisville. I view this as a very positive thing. It's a wonderful, growing, strong industry, but it does require proactive and aggressive business recruitment strategies. I won't get into the business recruitment process as a whole. I detailed it within the strategy, but it has become extremely competitive and this is a time for Morrisville to really outline and market nationally and internationally what this means for your community and for your ecosystem. In addition, expansion and retention of existing businesses by creating a comprehensive existing industry program. This is of equal, if not more important, is supporting your existing industry that contributes on average 80% of your new job growth. They're usually the largest contributors for new capital investment. So I have incorporated some strategies within this program that is a high-touch program, involves a tracking system, regular surveying of your existing industry, and more. In addition to this, the evaluation of the commercial and industrial real estate. Again, major shifts in your commercial and real estate landscape with major investments in the life science space, lots of Class A office space that's sitting vacant and just needs to be a focus. There should be strategies around that, as well as new sites identified for future industrial developments. Lastly, as part of this particular pillar is just cultivation and maintenance of your target industries. Diversified ecosystem in the Research Triangle is one of our biggest strengths. It's one of the reasons that we weathered the post-2008 recession much better than the rest of the US, and it's one of the reasons why we are going to weather the effects of the pandemic much better than other places, because we are not reliant on one particular industry. And Morrisville is a great example of this industry diversity, but there are areas for some more evaluation and there's areas where you could create even more diversity in this area. I'm going to skip this for now. We've included a full packet with priorities and timelines, but just for the purpose of time. So the second pillar, community advancement and collaboration. Again, this particular pillar, we reviewed regional engagement, small business support, and innovative ecosystem. This goal in particular is to promote community advancement, strengthen collaborative efforts, and drive sustained economic progress for Morrisville and its residents. So what exactly does this look like for Morrisville Economic Development? This means really ensuring visibility, engagement, and connection to the entire Research Triangle region. Again, an important aspect of our entire region is collaboration and connectedness. And there are really some areas where Morrisville Economic Development could reengage and find some overlap as well with your existing industry support. In terms of small business ecosystem, it was very clear to me that there was a shift made to focus on the small business community, both at the town and the chamber, and there's really been just a great wraparound effort that was very much needed for that community during the pandemic and even post-pandemic. So strategies that I have put into this program are more about maintaining that in the long run, utilizing the Morrisville Business Platform even after the grant funds have been fully utilized. I've also addressed hiring challenges, areas for being able to have small businesses in coworking spaces, and what that can mean for your innovation and entrepreneurial ecosystem. So that's the last bit for this particular pillar is cultivation of an innovative ecosystem that fosters entrepreneurship, collaboration, and creativity. There have been programs in the past that were launched. There have been iterations of the Wake Tech-Morrisville Launch Program, which are great. Again, areas I identified were just strengthening that ecosystem, creating a little bit more of a brand that's specific to Morrisville and building off of that. Okay, so the last goal and key pillar that we identified is brand identification and place-making. So this particular pillar reviewed marketing and quality of life. We want to establish a cohesive and competitive brand identity for Morrisville and maintain a diverse, inclusive, and connected community. We've talked about this a lot already, but the shift that Morrisville has experienced really requires, I believe, kind of a re-establishment and marketing of your identity and specifically as it pertains to economic development. So I've included strategies like streamlining your brand, creating a Morrisville Economic Development brand that can be catered to multiple audiences that have been mentioned throughout this strategy. So prospective companies, site selection consultants, existing industry entrepreneurs, and innovation partners. This can also serve as an area to really involve your local community, educating them on economic development programs, getting them excited about future investments in these particular areas. I will say, the biggest takeaway I had overall for quality of life was you guys are already doing it all. I almost had no suggestions in that area. There've been tremendous investments that have been made and just overwhelmingly positive feedback from what I've read. So that, I'm going to... Okay, so tried to zoom through that, but as I just wrap up that very high-level presentation and open the floor for question and answer, I did just want to reiterate that the goal in putting this strategy together was to enhance what you already have, maintain that focus on smart and intentional growth, and really creating a foundation that is sustainable in the long run as you will experience more, you know, naturally, staff turnover, organizational changes, and changes in your economy. So I'm going to turn it to Martha.
So I'm just going to leave Kathleen's summary up. So as you begin having this conversation, I just tried to think of some of the things that occurred to me, probably in particular as we were working through this, which is, again, revisiting the focus areas that are important to you. I'll pause and just say, I was very pleased, I'll say is the best word I can think of right now, that we didn't get from Kathleen just something that was boilerplate for economic development strategy. This is very Morrisville-centric. She knows our community, and I felt that in what she has provided to us. I think that it's clear that there's lots and lots and lots of detail in the attachments that you got that are worth reading probably multiple times as you continue this conversation so that you're able to pull out the questions that you have of Kathleen to come back and ask. But really, it's going to be the timing, the investment, the alignment with the chamber, what things are done, how they're going to be done. There's all kinds of level... Kathleen and I talked a lot about the fact that you need different levels of expertise. You know, some is more administrative and clerical, other is more the networking and the out there, and then some is the more complex project proposal management. And there's ways, I think she's illustrated that, and some of the, there's different ways to deliver those mechanisms. And those options need to be explored. And I think the most important thing I'll say is in conjunction with our Morrisville Chamber of Commerce collaborative partners, there are things that they do that align very closely with a lot of these strategies versus recreating a wheel. Beyond that, I think we started this conversation with how we deliver economic development and how we continue to support our partnership with the chamber are critical conversations to have. And they may align and they may diverge as so much has changed since that original agreement was done. We extended the contract for one year. That really needs to be one of the highest priorities to talk with our chamber partners about that chamber agreement along with this economic development strategy. And then I think the real question is, is what else do you need to continue your discussion and develop your next steps? I mean, there was a huge amount of information. I thought it was exceptionally well-written. I found it easy to follow. Kathleen is, I'll say, just like any other consultant we have, council has to make the decision. She's given us recommendations. Council may see things differently or the same, or have to figure out some of those other things. I think she mentioned three, at least three years. Did you say three to five?
Oh, yes, three to five.
So three to five, you know, putting something in place takes some time. You also had in your, I'm sorry, you also had included in your document some preliminary comments from the chamber about where they felt they had identified some things that they do or can do with continued discussion with council to support this economic development strategy. And just a reminder, they're here to talk with you or answer any questions as well.
Yes, I think we're taking questions. I can? Would you like me to do that? Sure, that'd be fine.
Oh, yes.
So three to five, you know, putting something in place takes some time. You also had in your, I'm sorry, you also had included in your document some preliminary comments from the chamber about where they felt they had identified some things that they do or can do with continued discussion with council to support this economic development strategy. And just a reminder, they're here to talk with you or answer any questions as well. Yes, I think we're taking questions. I can. Would you like me to do that?
Sure, that'd be fine.
So I didn't see who went up first. Did you go up first?
I didn't see either.
I'm sorry.
I'll grab it, since it's up for grabs. Thank you for the presentation. You're right, there is, there is a lot of information in here. And Martha, you said something that resonated with me as I read through everything, and I appreciate the letter that came from the chamber, but we do need to make sure we are aligned, that these two groups are aligned. And I would, the letter was very helpful from the chamber, but I would, I need a meeting. I need a meeting between these two groups so we can have discussion about how we're moving forward. There are a lot of things that we need to decide as a council, and I'd like to really understand their position and how they want to proceed forward. Having settled that, I will also say, we do need to update the contract. And I would tell you, the one, the one direction I think I would give at this point is, in the contract, it says you have to give 90 days' notice if you're going to update the contract. I would tell you, we need to give 90 days' notice that we're going to update the contract. I think it's, it's very outdated, and you, and that you were all, both of you were very clear in the presentation, that a lot has changed. And so, and our relationships have changed, and who's going to do what has changed. So I would tell you, that's probably the one thing I'm sure of tonight. Beyond that, I need a conversation with them to make sure that we are aligned and we're working. Because we've had a, and I appreciate, I have my back to all of them, I feel bad. I appreciate the relationship we've had with the chamber all these years, and the 24 years I've been on council, we've had a really strong working relationship, and that, I have valued that deeply, and I want to make sure moving forward that we continue that strong relationship, and I value their input as we make these changes, whatever they may be.
So if I could, I could make a couple comments related to that. So just as council establishes priorities, so does the chamber for their board. And many of the chamber executive committee and board of directors are, like many of you, work all day, this is something that they commit to and support, but they have jobs, and, and so they're, they're doing their best. And why do I say that? Because meetings are always challenging to get people together. One thing both groups, I'm just throwing it out there, may want to consider is a subset of people to have those meetings to just help facilitate that timing. Just, just something for you to consider, or just get way ahead of the amount of time it will take to set up a meeting where everybody's involved. Those are your real options. And it can happen, but there are morning meetings, there are, you know, 7:30, this is a business community, there are 7:30, 8 o'clock, not 6 o'clock in the, in the evening. So we'd have to get that aligned. Brandon and I have also talked a little bit about the timing of your work. It's like any other really in-depth project, it's sort of a multiple bites of an apple versus all at once, and, and how to have that given what you have on your plates. You're in an election cycle, you're going to only have one meeting in December, and, and maybe is this for you a retreat topic again, or really, you know, investing in it at some point? And that's going to be sort of Brandon's job to work with you on, but, you know, saying, let's do it now would be challenging, giving everything else you have on your plate. It's, it's how do you get started, and how do you pace it?
I like, a retreat idea is fabulous. Oh, thank you. That's all I have right now.
I'm sorry, Councilmember, Mayor Colley.
I was just wondering, Kathleen, if you could speak towards how mature we are as a community? You mentioned the over 1 million square feet of space. I'm interested in, what's our role there as compared to, like Trinity, or King Street Partners, or Saying Development? Like, is it our role to fill those spaces? I thought they were trying to lease it out to their tenants.
Yeah, no, and that's a, that's a great question, and one that is often asked. I think it is, it has to be a partnership. Martha and I have had so many conversations about the relationship between Morrisville and the development community and the brokers. So yes, they have chosen to invest in your community and build that space, but you also want to be a part of seeing and deciding who fills that space, being a part of that process. It is very intensive. It requires, especially for life sciences, these are very quick turnaround times, there's usually very high demands in terms of utilities and other resources that the town will want to be aware of and part of those conversations. It is also advantageous for the town to market that space and ensure that it does get filled. But my, I think there, it's exciting, but there is a need to market this as a town, and that is typically something that an economic development person or an economic development staff would be highly focused on. This would be one of their top priorities is rebranding, not rebranding all of Morrisville, but obviously identifying that there is now a corridor in the Central Research Triangle region that's brand new, and marketing this to companies throughout the U.S. and the world. There are tons of competing cities that also have wonderful life science industries. So I think it's just this not wanting to sit back too much and lean on the developers whose goals are much different than yours as a town. I would say they're driven by different things than you are as, you know, community-focused representatives. That would be my perspective.
Because the rebranding's already happened to a larger Southport Innovation Center that just used to be Southport. All the buildings look differently now, East Ridge. So I'm just trying to see if that is, that's a general economic development focus, but I don't know if that's the appropriate one for us to put our resources, since that's sort of taken care of itself, and how much land we still have left for industrial. I mean, I see TOD, we want to make sure that it's good tenants there, for example, and our town center is saying is working on that, that's more commercial. So I'm just trying to understand what our role would best be. I just want to say, I'm very happy with what the chamber's doing now, and I think there's more touch points that they can do a little bit more aggressively towards our bigger companies in town. Great relationship opportunities there. So I'm all for moving this forward sooner rather than later, but that's just my style. But I think that this is really great information in your report, lots of great nuggets that I just want to do right away.
Yeah.
But government doesn't move quite that quickly.
Yeah.
So if you, we react really well when you give us questions with options.
Yes.
To move us forward. Martha has become an expert at that. So that's just what I want to share for now.
Let me just add some observations to what you said. I think, and I'm going to sort of affirm, when we talk about branding and marketing, it's not individual centers. It is, it is a cohesive, this is what Morrisville is all about, and you've got multiple options. And, and I have described our economic development strategy, not, it's not a negative word, we've been passive. It has come to us, and we've been happy with that. There are communities out there that build spec buildings and do things like that to pull, they put the roads in, they put the utilities in because they are trying to attract. That's not what we're talking about, but it's more of a cohesive and complementary, everybody's singing from the same hymnal, and if you go to the town's website, you're going to see all these other things, and if you go to the chamber, they're all going to link back. It's not, South Point has painted it and looks different. That's not what we're talking about. It's, it's the message behind what we're all about. That's sort of what I've learned. Kathleen mentioned, you know, the Morrisville name, the bio conference that was in early June. I was specifically told by Wake County Economic Development, Morrisville needed to be represented at that conference. Just the presence of being there and talking to people and meeting was important to being known and identified. It wasn't enough just to have Spark and Pathway on a flyer that people could pick up as they went by the North Carolina booth.
Councilmember Scruggins-Johnson.
I wrote my notes just so I can make sure. Loved your presentation. You did a very thorough job. I'm a project manager, so I was like, this is so good. And you did provide additional information that wasn't shared tonight, so I appreciated that as well. I liked your timeline rollout thing that you didn't share tonight. Don't worry, don't, don't do it now. But I did have some observations. We live in a very unique environment. We have a highly educated workforce, and one of the highest educated in the nation. And we're not, you know, talking enough about it. I think it's really attractive to some industries, you know, the tech industry, of course, knows this, but the life sciences industry probably hasn't heard of Morrisville. And you really hit on a very important point. It's not only the awareness of Morrisville, but it's the resiliency and flexibility that we need in order to answer the calls when they come in. And we don't, we aren't positioned that way. We're kind of a slower kind of moving machine. We are making progress, but we're not as agile, and we need to do that. So I really appreciated that point. We do have a diverse base of companies, but we could mix it up still. And one of the things that I really like that we've done in years past is the HOTivation Program, where we really encourage entrepreneurs and small businesses to get some courage, get some training, get some support, and watch them grow. And that is the kind of support that I would like to see in the future as well, because we have, again, a very highly educated workforce that just needs a little bit of scaffolding, and we could create our own major company from within our own town. So just a lot of possibilities. And I think that we also need to think bigger. We are competing for projects within Wake County because they also have some really awesome, highly educated communities, but we need to think nationally.
Yeah.
And internationally, of course. Just thinking that bigger. So I really like the strategy because it kind of like said, okay, we're ready for the next level of maturity along our journey. So thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Boddy.
I don't think I'm really all that clear on what the, what the role is of the town versus the chamber versus the developers. Because I understand that if we have an economic development policy, I mean, I would hope that the chamber would align themselves with that, but, but what's the difference between what we'll actually do and what we'll do? That's what I don't, I don't really understand.
Yeah, so the biggest thing that we see when, you know, you're in the business recruitment process, and I should have also stressed, when I, business recruitment doesn't always mean new companies that are not already in Morrisville. I've had multiple projects over the course of five years where there is an existing company within Wake County that's operating under a confidential project name that they will not share with you, that they are located here. And so there is an opportunity for Morrisville companies to, existing Morrisville, like science companies or software development companies, to grow within your community instead of elsewhere. There is just really different priorities and misalignments between what a developer is going after and how they're approaching the recruitment process from you as a town or Morrisville Economic Development. I keep putting that in quotations because ideally, there is one or two people that's focused on that exact ecosystem that you're talking about. So making sure they're in all of the meetings where there is a company that's looking to locate in your town, so you can say, our town is special, it's different, it's diverse, these are our values, this is what we want in terms of a company that's joining our community. And that's very different than, you know, a conversation that's had strictly with a developer. So being in the room and part of those conversations is not only going to help them make the decision to land here, but it's also going to ensure that you're connected and that they have success in the long run.
So, but what's the difference between, what part of, I understand the developer's role, like they're, I think the question really is, what's the, what is the difference between the role of the chamber and the role of the town in economic, do those, do they overlap, or what do?
It is different.
I don't think I really understand that.
It's different for every single community. I heard it mentioned, the alignment, that there has to be alignment on every single aspect of economic development, but in terms of where it's funded, how it's operated, every single community does it differently. And success is based, again, on the partnership, the collaboration, and just understanding specific roles and responsibilities.
Okay, so what we do is, we put together an economic development plan, and then we can work out with the chamber who's, what skill sets are best aligned to what they're going to do, what we're going to do. And so what makes it, what makes it not overlap, duplicate the work, confuse the business community, is to have, to have that agreement that, of what we're going to do.
Yes.
Okay, and we can choose that, from that, there's, there's no norm, there's no, you know?
No, it's what, it's what you both decide will be high-functioning and ensure that you accomplish the goals that you set out to accomplish.
And what if, because I would, I would hope that the economic development plan is going to be quite forward-thinking. So it's going to, we're going to be doing a lot of new things that we don't do now. What if neither the town or the chamber has the skill set in house, then, then what do we do? Do we, like, do we hire someone? Do they hire someone? How does, how do we even decide?
I'll, I'll speak. I think it's deciding what your focus areas are first, and, and again, the timing and the strategy as you layer and build, and, and then that's the conversation. There's, there's already some things the town does that are going to align. There's things that the chamber does that align. And, you know, if you need defined resources to do that, it, it could be there, here, part-time, full-time, there's consultant options, there, there's just all kinds of options that you could explore.
Okay, all right, that's very helpful. Thank you.
Councilmember Gary Miller, are you also, is yours up? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Kathleen. I heard somewhere, like, you worked with Holly Springs. And the reason that resonated, because I've heard a lot of good things that the Holly Springs Economic Development has really created the search engine. I think if I'm not mistaken, like, previous mayor Dixie is to talk very highly on that. I wanted to see what, if you had worked with them, what did you work there, and how did it help so that it will help us understand the role that you played?
Sure, yeah. So I have worked very closely with the town of Holly Springs in my role at Wake County Economic Development. A lot of the work was, again, they have had a focus and set a focus specifically around the life sciences industry 20 years ago. Part of that was done by identifying sites for future development, and part of that is included in this strategy as well. But they, again, just had a very proactive and wraparound approach. They set a very clear vision for what they wanted their town to be in terms of industries and employment. The, I would not, though, compare Morrisville and Holly Springs, because again, the unique aspect with Morrisville is you already, and for many years, have been a powerhouse. Major global corporations, foreign headquarters. So it's more so now just looking at how the landscape has changed and just ensuring that you guys are staying with that growth, that you don't lose sight of who Morrisville is and its identity and what you want for the future, right? So now you have, now you're part of a major So now you have, now you're part of a major booming life science industry, and Morrisville will be known on the map globally because of all of the space that's coming online. So it's just, again, setting that vision and being very clear about the steps that you want to take and what you want the future of Morrisville to look like. But again, Morris, Holly Springs is kind of, they're just now experiencing their, like, kind of, you know, we did it moment, whereas you guys, I believe, are years past.
Absolutely, but the thing that I really liked, as I have seen the website in the past, is showing the land where it's available, what kind of economic development can be there. And it has been very clearly stated, I don't think I've seen anywhere in Morrisville any of that kind of detail. Or even if not the land, where is the space for life science available?
Yep.
That's, actually, I've not seen any of that data. But I do agree, yes, Morrisville is well-known, but doesn't mean like we have to just, you know, sit back and relax because we have to be more aggressive. I still remember the conversation, Michelle is there, like, you know, she came to me when we had rejected Amazon and now where the spark is.
Yeah.
And she said, what happened? And fast forward, this is what it is, you know? We got a better deal than what we had before. So it is important, so, and just not building, but also ensuring for our stock of people, the per capita income is 110,000 and it's going up. Yesterday I was in Smithville, it is still 70,000 for Clayton and 40,000 for Johnson County. So we are ahead. My ask is to ask, you have given a good presentation, but where do we go from here and what do we need to do? So that's, that's the key for us. And what's the dollar amount, if at all, whatever it is, so?
I can say confidently, you have to have a staff person that is focused on this. Ideally, you have an economic development director, and it is a large undertaking. But you have someone that is creating a website that clearly identifies exactly who you are to external companies, to site selection consultants, but also to your existing industry because you also don't want your existing industry to feel that, you know, they're not a priority or they don't have resources available. So I think that is the immediate next step.
And in the materials that Kathleen's provided, she's, she's sort of giving you the, I'll call it the pros and cons of where the type of person, the level of skill sets, and the placement of that position. And there's advantages and challenges that you need to look at for each of those. And then for probably both the town and the chamber, it is, it's not only identifying and getting somebody on, it's making sure, where does it fit in the organization? And I think those factors would, would be part of a conversation for both parties.
Then the question I have is, when you say we need a full time, is it under the chamber or is it under the town?
Again, that's what you need to talk about. And it, and it really depends on the, where you want to focus your efforts initially and long-term, and then have that conversation with your partner. Again, it's, it's that structure of that conversation with our chamber partners.
And then Kathleen, the other question is, how much runway do we have, knowing Morrisville is only nine square miles and we're slowly running out of space? That you envision 10 years from now, or five years from now, that we will be out of space? So what is the strategy, you know?
Well, I think, I think first and foremost, there's plenty of available space right now, and the focus can be to fill that, whether it's with new companies or whether it's working with your existing industry to see if they have expansion goals in the future and just continuing those conversations. But Morrisville has had six, very successful redevelopments as well. That's definitely always a great opportunity. I know the town center development, I also listed that within the strategy as certainly a priority. I think that's going to bring so many different positive aspects to the community.
So, I'm sorry, I'm just, last question, I wanted to expand on what you said, like, if a company is there, you're trying to expand on, you know, what they're doing. I don't think right now we do any of that, right? We just see companies coming in and that's pretty much it, you know? We don't even interact with, we do, the chamber does interact with them as part of a chambers group, but not really going and having the strategy call, okay, do you have plans to expand? You know, do you have, like, any things that we can work with you on that? So is it something that this person or the role will go around and do all those things?
Oh, yes, yeah, that would be, one of the main priorities is the wraparound for the existing industry. And I also included within the strategy, available state and local organizations that are already funded, that can partner with Morrisville, so that you're creating higher touch points. So if Martha can't be in the room for this particular high need Morrisville employer, that you have other partners that can still meet with them, provide resources, but they're, you're constantly in communication and you're not missing anything. You're always a part of that process, which is really important.
And what is your current contract? I mean, I say, what kind of withdrawals that you have given, that you do right now that you're missing out?
Let me answer that. So this presentation really reflects the end of Kathleen's services to help us look at an economic development strategy. You had in your packet of materials, a proposal just to give you an estimate of what the resources to help implement could potentially be. That does not put people in place to do these things. It's the work to get it moving. And again, I think it's based on, I think it's fair to say it's based on Kathleen's recommendations that could be modified or changed based on what council wanted to do. But that, that agreement is not executed until council has more discussion about where they want to go. But I did ask for that so we'd have some scope. Kathleen will have to balance things with her other clients and workload as council has this conversation. So this part to present a potential economic development strategy is really complete at the end of this meeting. Kathleen's also helping separately, and I've mentioned this to council, she's taking the lead on making sure those project proposals that are coming through are getting handled. As she mentioned, the turnaround on those sometimes is less than 24 hours. So you have to drop what you're doing to capture those. And then it could be 15 minutes or it could be five hours to, to address the request. So she's doing that, she's on retainer. Brandon, Kathleen and I met to talk about that. It's in place for as, as long as we need it, or I guess as long as she's willing to do it. I'll just give you an example. I think 20 proposals have come in since last week. And then we'll go weeks and there won't be a one. But they have been three and four a day these last couple of weeks. So that we don't, we don't fall through the cracks on that one.
And I just want to add, because it's top of mind, so that's one part of the business recruitment process. But another, just to further that conversation about why not just the developers, these companies and consultants are reaching out to communities with very fast deadlines. They will say, we're coming to visit your community in 24 hours. We want existing employer visits. We want your, to meet your utility providers, your workforce development, your, all of your town people. And they will know if y'all don't normally do that and you're not coordinated, and they will cut you off the list immediately. A company is not just going to land in Morrisville because space is available. They also want to ensure that they are joining a community that can react quickly, can respond to their needs, which of course Morrisville can do, but you have to show that in this front-end, really competitive space that they've created, so.
Councilmember Rep.
Excuse me. So I look at the economic development, recruitment is the first part, right? And what we're trying to decide is whether we would want to hire someone, that's a decision we had to make about bringing someone in and then divvying up the roles of what the chamber would do and what we would do, correct?
I think your first goal is, what do you want your economic development strategy to be?
Okay.
Then that will guide the rest of those discussions.
Okay, okay. So I guess, I guess that's, I just want to spend two minutes going through some things I think they're missing from our economic development strategy. Not so much from the recruitment stuff. I think we've got that down pat, whether we continue to work with you or whoever we bring on board to actually respond and provide the incentives and all that stuff. The other part is not only the supporting of the small businesses, but what can make Morrisville unique that could play very well on our brand? And I believe that that is technology and life sciences, but a lot of the technology companies are headquartered in Morrisville, the big ones. Cisco, I think it's in the park, but it's close to Morrisville. IBM, Channel Advisor. And then you have a lot of small tech. And these are, many of them are minority-owned businesses, many Indian CEOs of small tech. Sathish knows a lot of them, and they all live in Morrisville. One of our friends runs a $100 million company in Morrisville.
Oh, yeah.
And he's, they're just not connected with the town.
Yep.
And so I think other organizations like NC Tech, NC Riot, CED, whenever, you know, CED, like, NC Tech focuses on the big tech. So what I'm trying to say is that if we could recruit, if we, if Morrisville could be a hub in the state of North Carolina for like small tech, like all the cutting-edge startups to come, then that would be good for the chamber because then they could be more prospective members to the chamber.
Absolutely.
And give the chamber something that nobody, no other chamber in the county right now has any small tech coming to them.
Yeah.
Whether, I mean, I know we're our regional partners, but I'm a very competitive guy, so I want Morrisville to be the number one. I hope no one cares listening to this live stream. But, but the bottom line is that that would give us the ability to recruit those companies and then they could join the chamber. When, when you, I'll just close out with this, like an incubator workspace, we're talking about downtown, so something that you could actually have, like a Raleigh HQ or something like in Durham that they have where they have a thing that says, you know, 4,000 jobs created, $100 million raised. What if Morrisville had something like that? I think the reason people aren't coming here is because they don't know that that's what we're about because it's no one's fault. It's just, I don't think we've been very focused. And so if we can create those jobs here and then they would stay in Morrisville, then we could actually have a whole other side of economic development.
Yeah.
What I get frustrated is that, like, you know, the final thing I'll say is, we've been, now, we've gone from nowhere to being a nationally recognized leader in smart cities, IOT.
Yeah.
And Riot, which is a great organization, that, you know, all the events are in Raleigh. And, I mean, we should be doing events here so that we could, we've had success even in our own town with entrepreneurs in our own town that have come in and helped us with creating smart city dashboards and doing really, really great stuff.
Yeah.
And then those people are going to get more money and everything. So I just think that this is, this could be a huge thing for Morrisville because I think that we've got the talent and we've got the people here that are ready, but we just have to, like, go after it.
Yeah.
I just wanted to share that.
I agree.
You may disagree with what I said.
No, I agree completely.
One of the things in the chamber comments was that, that, that they have, I think, ability and opportunity to tailor and custom events that would align with an economic development strategy. They, you know, they have a core slate of programs, but, but they, they've offered and started talking about, also, I think the example is the small business that they just did and the life science that's coming up, to tailor things that align the organizations. So that's, that's in that document. I think it's really important, again, to recognize that there are some core things that is, is the chamber's bread and butter that align with economic development. When Sarah Gaskell and I used to talk about, you know, where she was spending her time, there was economic development and there was chamber, and there's a whole bunch in the middle that meets both purposes. I mean, you can't put it on one side of the ledger or not because it meets both of those needs. And, and that's, again, part of the conversation. I see second round coming up. Councilmember Fender, any?
I'm just...
Taking it all in?
Yeah, I just, well, the question I have, I guess, is, and maybe it's in this other document, I haven't had a chance to read, but you have examples of specific tasks or action items, like for this brand identification and placemaking. I mean, you have a brand, but like, what does that look like for what you're talking about?
Yeah, oh, yeah. And I do have all of those. And that, and exactly what you mentioned is detailed under the marketing area of focus. So what I presented was so super high-level, but some things that I recommend are, again, the Morrisville Economic Development so that when, because it will get searched in this economic development community, they'll type Morrisville Economic Development and they want a website that is Morrisville Economic Development that clearly markets who you are as a business community and gives the, you know, the top highlights of what you want to be known for in the U.S. and internationally.
Is there, do other, so is there an example of the town of Cary or the town of Holly Springs that has that same thing?
Oh, yeah, there's, yeah, there's tons of examples.
The Wake County Economic Development website is phenomenal as well. And they're sort of our umbrella. So there are regional.
But then there are towns that do have their own website as well.
And there's pretty, pretty basic criteria in terms of what you do want listed that gets searched and used regularly. So there's platforms and criteria specific to that.
Thank you. Before we take second round, do you want to hear from the chamber or have any comments?
Yes.
Morrisville Chamber team?
How can you be as brutal as I'm trying to...
Do we need a mic? A mic?
Emily, would you mind coming up to the mic?
Here she is.
Here you go.
Well, I just want to say thank you for the opportunity. We echo a lot of what you guys have said here today. This partnership is extremely important to us, and we think the success of economic development really is based on that partnership between the town and the chamber. There's a lot of opportunity. As Martha alluded to, typically we have been reactive, and I think we all want to be proactive in economic development. But the town is straining resources, the chamber is straining resources, so there's opportunity for us to come together, identify that need, where we can better partner, where we could hire someone, and then who does what going forward. We, like you, Councilwoman Johnson, welcome the opportunity for further discussions in a, you know, smaller group. What does this look like? How do we hammer this out? But I think we're all eager. One thing that we have identified that has hampered us, and I think you guys recognize this too, is we've talked about economic development, but we've never had those goals of, we want to focus in small business, we want to focus in new recruitment, here's metrics of how we identify success. So we have felt a little hampered in that. And creating the strategy and having these measurable objectives, I think, will help all of us and really guide us in where we want to go. But we are, we're happy to be here, my colleagues, Veronica Rose, everyone. Sean, he'll be taking this over soon as our incoming chair. We want, we want a successful program. We're invested in Morrisville like you guys, and there have been conversations about what other municipalities are doing. A lot of them do have their own dedicated economic development department, but they still have some type of support structure for the chamber, so there is that collaboration going forward. So I think there are a lot of models we can look at. They're great partners in this community, and let's figure out what works for us.
Can we get several, you said there are several models, right? Can we get that, like, some examples of how other towns...
Yeah, I think, I think, yeah, Kathleen's done some of that, and I know that Emily's got engagement with a number of chambers. got engagement with a number of Chambers and has some ideas about some of the structure and the way municipal, candidly, the way municipalities support Chambers, much different models than our approach has been. And, and I'll certainly be one that says the, the success of the Chamber is the success of the town. That is, that is a critical factor to this, so. Councilmember Abadi?
Yeah, could, luckily I wrote it down. So when Congressman Ross went to India, she came back and she talked about there was an innovation hub where a, a small business could, or not even a small business, a person with an idea could go and they could, they could use equipment that was there, they could, they could get their idea basically ready for, ready to hit the market, you know, and they could, and there were people there to help them with, with the legality and the, you know, all the things that go into marketing an idea when you have an idea, but you don't have any other experience.
Yep.
And I thought that, you were there, that was, that was a good presentation. And I thought that was really interesting and I think that's the kind of thing where entrepreneurship, you know, welcoming entrepreneurship is one thing, supporting entrepreneurship is another thing.
Yep.
And I think, like, I think we have everything we need for some really big ideas to come out of Morrisville. And so that's something, I mean, I don't know if it's currently in the plan, but it is something that I would, you know, that I'd just like to put in the hopper. And, because I think that, you know, I think that the more, I mean, the more that we're willing to invest, it, it always comes back to investment. But when we invest in businesses and they become successful here, then they invest in us.
Yeah.
So...
Yep. And, and I'll just say coworking spaces that have evolved to not just support small business, but to do exactly what you just mentioned in terms of providing all of the, the wraparound services.
Like kind of Frontier Plus.
Right.
You know?
Yeah.
Something like that. I think that, I love that.
And so one advantage of knowing that that is something that you guys are aligned on and wanting, you can talk to developers who are in Morrisville and building out their spaces and say, can you incorporate this? And, you know, I don't know if that is...
Yeah, I mean, just, I mean, just one thing, it's not like we're aligned on it. I literally just thought of it like 15 minutes ago, but, so I don't know if we're aligned on it, but it is something I would like to talk about, like it's one of the ideas that I'd like to put in the hopper for the discussion.
Awesome.
Mayor Pretend Johnson?
So I think Kathleen, you said this a little while ago. You talked about how you need to have a vision for what this business community looks like. And I'm not sure we have ever done that. We talk about land use, we talk about, you know, land use plan and we update that, but we never talk about the vision of the, of the business community. And I think, I, I think, well, I need to start there. And we have been passive. We've taken advantage of what's come. You know, the whole life science world, I'm not sure we went out there and recruited them. If somebody recruited them, you can, you can stand up, but they came and we made sure to welcome them. And so now here we are with lots of redevelopment that has come out of that life science world. So, and I've been saying this for years, the redevelopment opportunity is huge in this town. And, and over time it will continue to be huge. So I'm not one that's really worried about, you know, we, we, are all our lands developed and we're done. I, I don't, I don't think that will ever happen.
Definitely not, yeah.
Yeah, and we, again, we see that with the life science. They came in and redeveloped a couple of properties. So, so I, I, so thank you for saying that because it was like one of those aha moments for me, that we really need to have a vision for that. And I would tell you, branding, if I was thinking, I would focus on branding. I, I, I have to do something with my phone. I was actually in, in the mountains. I was up near West Jefferson. And when I left and I did something on my phone, a video of West Jefferson came up and I watched it and I thought, it's West Jefferson, North Carolina.
I'm telling you, people are getting really creative because they have to.
Yes, I thought, well, clearly they got some kind of branding strategy because, and I watched the video and it was really nice. But, so anyhow, I just wanted to say that. And then I'm looking through my notes. You mentioned also, you said we have some, we need to have a Class A strategy and I would 100% agree with that. I think we, and that potentially could be folded into that whole redevelopment. It may not have, it may not always be Class A. It may turn into, I don't know what. And I think there's opportunities around us. And we talked about this with Apple coming in.
Yeah.
When the, when the executives came, I can't remember anymore who came in and we chatted. And one of the questions I had was, okay, I hear what you're doing, Apple, on your campus and how many people you're bringing, but when you went to Austin, what happened around you and who else came with you? And so, you know, I think that's even a huger opportunity.
Agreed.
Or huge, huger's not a word, huge opportunity. 10/30 huger is the word. So anyhow, so there, just some, some thoughts I had in the...
Thank you.
Your, your presentation's very, been very thought provoking, so I appreciate it. And Martha as well has added to that, so thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Colley?
I'd like to build upon what Mayor Pretend was saying about how the redevelopment is happening kind of organically. We're no longer a logistics hub. We're becoming life sciences. I mean, that's happening in all areas of South Florida, losing our parts of rectifarm, so I think that's happening.
No, we're not.
It was a strategy.
You can't hear the mayor?
Okay.
Sorry about that. Yeah, so we used to be a logistics hub because we're close to RDU. Now we're very different and people are seeing us as a different thing, a higher and best use. In regards to recruiting life sciences, I think we aggressively did that through our planning department by changing all of our code to make it possible. That made McCrimmon possible, so I just want to recognize the planning department for that. Councilmember Abadi was talking about an innovation maker space from India that Ross was talking about. I think there's some people like the Frontier, First Flight Venture Center are doing things like that now, but I really like the idea of encouraging our current open space to maybe embrace that. We did that with Alter Morrisville, now Alter Ren. They have workspace as part of their apartments, which is really good. But I want to ask a question of Emily, if I may. Kathleen, you said that we have to have a staff person focused on this. I'm trying to see any way that that's not funded by the town. Does the Chamber agree that there needs to be a person focused on this?
Absolutely. And, and that's in our comments. We agree there needs to be someone dedicated to economic development. The Chamber doesn't have the funds for that. We'd have to figure that out.
Right.
And funding is different than where it gets placed.
Correct.
That's two different kinds of conversation. Funding could be provided to the Chamber depending on where you want that person and what that person does. And I think, again, it's important to read Kathleen's scope of thing. There's money and then there's the logistics of the person and...
Where it fits appropriately and where we can be successful.
So I would come at this a little bit differently. We've heard that maybe tell, what's your focus and that determines the person. I almost flipped that a little bit and say, we have a lot of great information here. Let's hire a person to start implementing things. It's, can't really be funded by the Chamber. They don't have the funds, they don't have the capacity. It's funded by us. Why would we embed someone at the Chamber that? We, we got bitten at COVID. Our Chamber was less than fully effective during that time because we didn't have an internal staff person doing the work. So I would love to have the persistency and the sustainability of having a Town of Morrisville employee focused on this. And I think that would work really well with the Chamber as well. I think that complements everything. As was mentioned, any of these tasks can be done by the Chamber or the town. So we should, I hope that we think that we do need a person and that's the first step in my going forward and moving things probably more quickly than others are comfortable. But I just wanted to share that thought that if we're going to do it, the time might be sooner rather than later because I love the fact that you're doing all this great work, but I would love to have an employee doing that work so they have the experience and they have the knowledge of the town. Because you are a consultant and we'll bring you back again.
Yeah, no, I totally...
But it'd be better to have a person that we...
I get it.
Our, our employee. So that's just kind of my big picture thoughts, that if we want to be taken seriously and we need a, a commitment to support ED with an agile, persistent and sustainable way, and that is a person. So that's kind of my summary from the report.
Are you up or out?
I think I'm up. Did I already go twice? Because I'm sorry, I'm completely losing track. It is literally so late.
It, it is. It's 10:24. And again, we've given you a lot to digest.
Okay, then I'm done.
And I think there's lots more discussion to be had and you have to figure out how and when with Brandon and Giselle. And I think Giselle has provided your rolling calendar. I think we had, at, at some point earlier, you've got heavy agendas. So, and it really is important to take the time to review all of Kathleen's materials so that you can frame and formulate the questions that can put together an agenda. And again, and incorporate your Chamber partners into that conversation. And I don't think that the time to do that is 10:30.
That was some really stellar work though, Kathleen, I have to say.
Thank you.
And I know this is your bread and butter, but I, this is really helpful.
Thank you.
I'm glad to hear that.
Could I go again? In order to keep it moving forward though, I did note the four focus areas that I think are important for Morrisville, given where we are. So if that's something that the rest of the Council is willing to share with staff for the next couple of weeks, that could keep us moving forward. Mine were business retention and expansion. And then I highlighted a little bit extra after your comments to help fill the existing spaces as well because there's lots of Class A office that's not being used, so getting that filled up. Small business support, innovation ecosystem and a diversified economic base because I think we might be putting a lot of eggs in one basket as we move forward. So those were my...
So you want four pillars from each of us?
Um, no, as many as you think are appropriate, that that could be the focus that we start on because that was mentioned as you have to decide on what your focus is to help determine who the person is, where they're going to be based. It's, it's maybe the next, part of the next step for future discussions. So rather than just coming into the next discussion without a little bit more additional information, that would get us a little bit further down the, the pathway towards actually executing and taking some action. Because this has been great, but no action yet. This is still information.
Are you, well, I had a question about what you just said. These items...
Those are matching those items.
Why do you have four?
Because there's a lot more than four, but I think these are the ones, in my opinion, that could rise to the top immediately.
So I really like the scaffolding here. I was not aware that I would have a, an assignment to pick some of these. I, I, I feel I support this. And this is a great way to start the conversation. I also want to continue this conversation again at the retreat. I didn't know if there was an action that we really needed to agree on exactly tonight because it is a lot of, there's a lot of layers. There's layers that you have not had the time, we've not afforded you the time to go over some of the other plans, but they're really good and we really need to dig in. And to choose this slide without having all the background information, I think is a little early and maybe we should give ourselves a little bit of time to digest.
Well, I think that Mayor's point, if you don't mind.
Please do.
I think that the point is that we, is that we can start thinking, read through obviously everything that, that's there, not just what was presented tonight, right? But I think the point is that we can start to talk to each other about from that whole plan, what's important to us, what we think the focus areas are, what resonated with us. And then that, the more that we share that with each other, the more that will have, the more that will develop, the agenda kind of writes itself once you're doing it.
Exactly. You're, you're saying, maybe I didn't articulate it, but I don't want to pick four tonight.
No, no, I don't think anybody's saying pick four.
But that's what he just did.
He picked four. He was it.
I shared my four and I'm not trying to railroad anything. I'm just trying to get us moving this forward as much as possible.
I'm not prepared to pick any...
Not, not asking you to tonight.
Okay.
I'm just saying this would be a way to keep this moving forward. Something's resonated with you and you thought, yeah, that actually makes sense. Share that with the rest of us so that we are seeing if we have alignment on certain things and if we do, that is our path forward.
But not for the love of God tonight.
Exactly.
I wasn't saying tonight.
So let me try to summarize if, if, and I, I think it is important to keep your conversation going. So, so if you want to do that, you would need to direct staff to, to find time to do what you want them to do so then they could try to incorporate that into a schedule. And what is, is that a meeting with the Chamber? Is that a discussion after everybody has read that you're brainstorming and putting that on? And, and give them some feedback about how to structure that next kind of conversation? And meetings can be in tandem as well with, if you want to try to get something set up with the Chamber and Council continuing to discuss at a work session or another meeting.
Maybe I'm wrong, but I'm kind of seeing this, I'm kind of seeing the whole thing like a little more casual, like me and Emily go to lunch or, you know, like Liz and Vicky talk on the phone. Like I don't, I don't think we need to necessarily put a ton of effort on staff, do we? Like, unless you feel strongly that we should have meetings like when we...
Like you, at some point you all have to talk to each other, I think, is what I'm saying, even if you do those other things.
As a group, we have to have a discussion. It's okay to have one offs, but...
But didn't you say you wanted to do it at the retreat? That's what I thought we were doing.
That was our goal.
Yeah.
Councilmember Fender?
I think what I'm hearing Martha say, one of the options is we go back, we read this material, take it in, and then maybe we have another formal discussion and come back with all the town council members.
Yeah, you got your package on Thursday? Was it Thursday? And, and, and no, you don't just drop everything you do, you know? Are you committed over the next couple of weeks to really invest, highlight, make your notes so that you can get all that feedback out to share with each other? Again, you've got a great facilitator in Genie to put stickies up if, if that's the kind of session you need. You've got those options, you just need to tell staff what you want them to coordinate for you and when.
When is the big question. I think we, I think it's clear we want to do that. And I love sticky notes. That, visuals are really helpful.
I do enjoy that.
They're, they're very helpful, but, but when is, and that, that schedule is a little daunting that we got handed to us right before the meeting started.
And staff can help you with that once they've got some sense of what you want that to be. They can help you with that, but you have to invest the time to review the materials and come prepared to that meeting to make it as productive as possible.
Totally.
And I would, I would really like if we're able to do that before the retreat. Like a sticky exercise can happen via email and then we can have a meeting.
What's this item on here for the 24th Economic Development Project? Is that this or is that some totally different?
I actually can't...
Oh, is that closed session?
Oh, yes.
Project?
Yeah. I, I, I don't agree that a sticky exercise can be done by email, but that's my opinion.
To a point in that, it's like...
Eisenhower's...
It depends on your software.
She does have Miro.
I don't use Miro before.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
This was great.
Motion to have Ann adjourned.
I will do a Chris Lawson. Thanks for having me.
Emily, did you or any of the Chamber reps want to say anything?
I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity. We are happy to do lunch, coffee, apparently. I'm taking Councilmembers to Angus Barn over lunch, just kidding. But seriously, we're open to any of the conversations before more formal meetings happen. Rose, Veronica, Sean, do you all have anything that...
Not that I can say anything for you, but I would love that if we're going to have a true partnership, both sides have to come together in a three year. So I think it would be a great partnership. I think we bring a lot of great ideas together to the table and do highlighting Morrisville. So we'd love to be invited to those conversations so that we could talk this out.
And I would just like to thank the Council and your support. Most of you have attended our events and you see the value of the programming that we've offered. we've offered. We want to offer more programming like that. We do need support from the general. A, a strong chamber is a reflection of the town. And with that, we're in Morrisville, with that potential that's unlimited. And, uh, I think a chamber is very important to our continued health and growth together.
Yeah. I sit on, um, the chamber of Riley Chamber. I'm looking at those things.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you so much at 10:30. So, um, I sit on both the Riley Chamber as well as the Morris Chamber as a partner on with our company. And I will echo exactly what Rose said a few moments ago is that I've attended a lot of the Morrisville Chamber events and I do see a lot of town council coming and participating in it. And it's a great insight to help support us, but also seeing the support as, as a town council to support the community that, that we're currently serving. So, you know, this partnership with us will always continue. It's going to be a great partnership and, and I appreciate the opportunity to be able to, to speak on and hear exactly what your thoughts are because I feel like we're all aligned on, on what you're, you're thinking as well. Thank you.
Any final thoughts?
No, thank you, mayor.
Kathleen, anything?
Just thank you for the opportunity.
Um, on behalf of the council, this is a really great report, very detailed. Um, so I look forward to executing as much of this as we can as soon as possible. Really good work. Thank you. Um, anything else for the good of the order? Okay.
Anything?
Yep. I entertain a motion to adjourn.[1783.57]